Hey Jamie. Marshall. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Can I just ask, the Meridian crowd, are the Shaddocks in the same room with you? Or are we waiting for them to join? Yeah, okay. It's hard to see. Tiny, tiny picture. Okay, well, welcome everyone to December 15th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting. I'm going to ask for a roll call of the Planning Board members. I'll just read down the name and you just say here, just so that we don't have people talking over each other. Just a couple of things. For everyone else, you're going to be muted. This is a Planning Board discussion. So unless you're asked for comment, there's no public comment for this case. There is a chat and a raised hand that you can use, that Jamie will be monitoring. Okay, um, let's have a roll call. We're down the list here. Jerry Bernstein.
Present.
Sarah Pyle.
Present.
Betsy Hardwick.
She's muted.
Present.
Somebody unmute Betsy.
Can you not? Okay, hang on. Go ahead, you're unmuted, Betsy.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, Jerry. You already called, okay. Sorry, I'm just looking at this list here. Linda Kuhnhardt.
Present.
Karen Fitzgerald, present. Is Lisa Heath here? Scott Heath, is that you Lisa? Can you unmute? Lisa, Jamie, I think it's under Scott.
Hit the spacebar twice, it will unmute.
Okay. And Brad Howell?
I'm here.
Okay, I think that is everyone. All of the Planning Board members? Yes? Alright, we are going to continue the meeting for case 20 SDO3 subdivision application. From our previous, oh, I'm sorry, agenda item. I just want to confirm the Planning Board minutes before we get into that. Did everyone get a chance to review the minutes and the revised minutes from the last two meetings?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't.
Should we move to review for next meeting? That's January. It's going to be three.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I'll have to recuse myself if we're going forward with them. I'm sorry, I just didn't focus on them. I'm okay with continuing to January.
Okay. Um.
One, well, okay, yep. One caveat is it'd be nice to have them for the case before the case is sent to get recorded, if it's going to get recorded. But it can wait.
Okay. Okay, uh, we will move those to the next meeting.
I'm also, I'm happy to recuse if everybody else is ready to rule on them. I'm happy to just, I mean, not recuse, but abstain from voting on them.
Okay, did, did Jerry and Lisa and Betsy, Brad, did you have a chance to review?
Yes. I did.
Okay. Brad? And Lisa, are you, I really need to hear her.
Yeah, I, I, Brad, right.
Okay, and Lisa Heath, if you're aye, aye, aye. Are you unmuted? I don't even see her on here anymore.
Well, I use the participant. If you click on the participant button, you get a list, an actual list.
Yeah, yeah, listen, okay. I see Scott Heath, is that Lisa? If so, I can't hear you. Can you just type a note in the chat? Okay.
I just, I just asked him to unmute.
Yeah.
That's okay, I guess if she can't, can you figure out how to get her on the phone, you know, I'll try, I'll try and get her on the phone. So I'd say that you should skip her for the moment and I'll try and see if I can get her by phone.
Okay, do we have a quorum for vote one, two, three, myself, four or five, okay. Do you have a motion to accept the Planning Board meetings, meeting notes?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. From November 17th?
Second.
Second, Kuhnhardt, okay.
Wait, were you asking for edits?
Well, did you, sorry, did you have edits?
Yeah, I, Betsy, you'd have to confirm this, but when you gave me the timeline of cuts and intention to cut, you had given me also November report of cut, which isn't in the minutes.
That from the 17th or the November 17th?
After September 2019 intent to cut and before November 2019 building permit. And Betsy, I, I think what you had told, what you had conveyed to me, there was also November report of cut?
That's right. I think I said that at that meeting too, yes.
Right, and that's not, that's not reflected in these minutes.
In the November 17th minutes?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. Are we, are we approving, sorry, are we approving November 17th?
Yep.
No, 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 sorry, this was December 1st.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So we have a motion to accept the minutes of November 17th and a second. Favor?
Burns, do you have it? Oh.
Okay. Okay, moving to the minutes of December 1st, so Jerry has a revision. Revision to item.
Second page.
Page two.
First paragraph on page two, first full paragraph. Sixth line. In between September 2019 intent to cut should be inserted, in between that and November 2019 building permit should be inserted November report of cut, if Betsy, if you can confirm that.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, where does it go? It goes after September 2019 and before November 2019.
Correct.
And, and, and what is missing is the September.
What's missing is November report of cut.
Oh, I got it.
Okay. Other revisions? Can we have a motion to accept as revised?
I'll make a motion to accept as revised.
Second.
Second by Hardwick. Motion by Bernstein, okay. Thank you.
Kuhnhardt, favor.
Yeah, all in favor, you can raise your hand. Kuhnhardt, Bernstein, Fitzgerald, Hardwick, Pyle, Brad Howell, I don't know about Lisa.
And if, if you're going into the case next, then I will recuse.
Okay, yes. Okay, continuing the case for the subdivision, let's just have another board roll call attendance for that case.
Bernstein, present.
Hardwick, present.
Fitzgerald, present. Bernstein, Hardwick, Fitzgerald.
Pyle. Brad. Brad's muted again.
I'm sorry.
Present. And
and Patrick being
Patrick is not here. And Lisa Heath. Okay, I don't know what to do about Lisa. Lisa, we can't hear you if you're speaking. Okay. Okay, so I'm going to just go ahead. We've received some revised materials from Meridian Engineers. Jamie, do you have those? Do you want to share those? On the screen, or do you want me to do that?
Jamie there?
Jamie?
If you want to go share them, please do.
Okay. Do I have the power to share? Okay, great. Let me just, um. Okay.
I just texted Lisa Heath.
Sorry, my computer, these are big files. Sorry, the files are big. I'm just trying to get them loaded up, okay. They're slow. Alrighty, I'm going to share my screen so everyone can see. Is everyone seeing the subdivision plan?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, um.
Karen, can I enter for a sec? I just got a text back from Lisa saying she's there, she can see and hear us, she's unmuted, but we still can't hear her.
Okay.
Jamie, is there something that you can figure out there?
I'm trying to find her.
She's under Scott.
She should check her mic setting.
Yeah, on her computer.
On, uh, at the bottom of her
Lisa is unmuted.
Right. She, if she's having trouble with her own microphone, I think. And does she have a, um, can she see the chat box? I, I, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
She needs to check her mic setting.
I just answered that.
Yep.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Okay, so I apologize. Um, so Meridian or John, or do you want to run through the new site plan materials? And I can switch drawings as needed?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, we made provisions to the subdivision plans and I had gone out to the site to locate the additional wetlands along the Kuhnhardt property to revise the buffer. Let me actually start from the beginning here. I made some notes in regards to the changes. So we, we showed the interior stone walls on the plan, add the tree lines, stop disposal areas, the interior stream, the stone foundation, the riding rink and the adjacent wetlands on the Kuhnhardt property. The existing stone wall separating lots 17 and 18 that's been revised to show its current nature. I know it was mentioned before that we had some line type on there that was stone wall when it had been removed, so that's been changed. We added a common driveway in between the proposed lots three and four. And we also added a relative easement location along with some notes stating that it was for use of access and utilities. Note 10 on the plan had been revised simply to call out that the four lots were going to require AOP as part of the subdivision. And which lots actually required to have state subdivision approval.
I'm sorry, that's note 10? Is that what you said?
I believe it was note 10, yeah.
Subdivision approval, yep, got it, thank you.
We also added notes 13 through 17, which speak to the preservation of foliage along with Stevens Road Stone Mall, the planting of trees for the four new lots, the common driveway easement and the limitations within the offer for district. The building setback on proposed lot four has been revised per the wetland location. I can run through the, the new notes that we added.
Okay. So this is the new flagged wetland area.
Yes, that's the lineage of the wetland, yep.
Yep.
And the setback line now reflects that location.
Okay. Okay.
So our note 13, we had on the plan states that any interior stone walls on the lots 3-18, that one through 3-18, that four shall either remain undisturbed or maybe relocated to the property sidelines, meaning that if they ever needed to be moved, they could be moved only to the property sidelines. Our note 14 states that proposed lots one, one and two shall be subject to the proposed common, common access and utility easement to be shown on the plans. Note 15 states any trees along Stevens Road that are immediately adjacent to the stone wall shall remain undisturbed unless deemed unsafe by the Department of Public Works. Our note 16 states that prior to certificate of occupancy, proposed lots 3-18-1 through 3-18-4 shall have three trees native to the area within the front yard, no less than 50 feet apart. Our note 17 speaks to the offer for district. It was pointed out by the conservation commission that there was some soils on the property. I don't know if she was speaking to prime fireland soils or if she was speaking to the offer. I checked both. The soils on the site are not that of prime fireland. But there is a secondary portion of an offer for district. It's the a coarse grain stratified drift offer with transmissivity of less than 1,000 square feet or less per day. The only requirement from that standpoint would be no stop disposal or waste treatment should be allowed in that area. And limited salt use would be recommended.
Okay, that's this right here, this
That area that's hatched there, yep.
Hatched area, yep, okay.
John, I just want to clarify something in your cover email today to Karen, you had stated in a bullet point that a common driveway has been shown for lot three and four.
That's been a typo on my behalf, if that's what I said. It was actually one and two.
One and two.
Yeah.
So I'll just show that.
If you jump to sheet four.
Yep. There we go. There we go. Right here.
And you're correct, I did make a typo on that scan point with what lots one and two. We'll have to revise that.
Okay.
Are you hearing us okay, by the way? We didn't do any sound.
Yeah, I can hear you, fine. Um.
I mean, other than that, I mean, those were the revisions that we added to the plan. It was just the material that was asked for on site and our changes that we felt were appropriate to make this more appealing.
Okay. I'd like to just take discussion from the board. Questions and comments.
Uh, no. Did this get the road frontage accurate per individual road length?
Yes, I did change that. So if you jump to any of the sheets, let's go to sheet three, actually, I believe is where that was shown, that you had commented on.
And you are aware that on lot 3-18-4, the frontage, the notations that you have do, I don't mean to be picky, but they don't add up to 300 feet. They add up to 299.99 feet. So that needs to be 300 feet.
On which lot, four?
Yep.
It could have been a rounding error from the software, but we can certainly change that.
Okay, and what was your question?
It was about the sheet three, they had mentioned the, the frontage that we had listed last time, which was the entire lot 3-18. And I was trying to display the sheet three, if you take a look at the frontage that's listed now, it's listed separately for Stevens Road and for the second-hand print bike.
Okay. I see, I see what you're saying, okay. So that's here, here and here.
Hi.
Yeah, but inside the, the block that says 3-18 resulting, right above the riding, the riding arena.
Okay.
Riding rink, that we have labeled, if you can zoom in there. That's where you'll see, it's just a labeling for the frontage. Can you see a little bit? To where we can see that block.
Am I going the right way?
Straight up, so we can see the lower portion of 3-18.
I see, okay.
No, I don't know, we're getting there.
A little bit too long, okay, there we go, I got it, yep. There we go. So here we have the frontage on Stevens and then frontage on
The second hand print bike, yep.
Okay. Okay.
I'm asking about the, the letter that we received about the alteration of terrain from Doug Broder, oh, sorry, from Mike Schlosser.
Okay. That we actually did submit that material in the site plan application. Doug had sent his email, I guess it went through on that application portion. We do have a handy, there was an email that was sent from the DES. Do we happen to have that, or can we bring that up?
I'm sorry, say that again.
We had sent it over today to Karen, the letter supplied by the DES. I didn't know if that was something that she was able to pull up.
Yeah, let me just
But when, now, when you say that that was part of the site development application, the, the alteration of terrain permit, why is it part of the site development application when it's pertaining the subdivision application?
No, no, no. Doug sent it over because Doug was the one that was in contact with the DES. So when he sent over his site plan application, it was in that email.
Oh, okay.
The house he received that, not necessarily what it was speaking to.
Okay, so is it your contention still that you do not need an alteration of terrain permit on any part of this land except the four, the proposed four lots?
Yeah.
And, and it's, and you believe this letter is, is a fact stating that? Because as I read this letter, it says as long as, it doesn't need it as long as it's not part of a larger plan of development, which it is. So the larger plan should have the, the alteration of terrain review.
No, only the parts that don't pertain, the parts that pertain to development need to have the offering of terrain. The part that's remaining does not, that's the way the letter is speaking. What it's saying is so long that you're not doing anything with 3-18, and that's the way it's going to remain, then it does not need alteration. that's the way it's going to remain, then it does not need all reason for rain.
Except you have done something with it, A, and B, it is part of this subdivision, whether it's a separate use because the site plan is going on it. We're still dividing this entire parcel.
Let me have Doug speak to this because Doug had proposed on its conversations with the D E S. Do you mind hanging on one second, get a swap here? Sarah, you read the, you have the email?
I do.
Yeah, and just for the record, Doug Broder. What it says, if you read the first part is, it's my understanding in the agricultural operation on lot three eighteen, we could definitely, it's in a normal agricultural operation, which it does. If this is the case, an A O T permit is not required for the length we are in on the plan. What they, what he's talking about is that E N V W Q fifteen oh two point four four, where it says A one are not part of a larger plan of development for a purpose other than agriculture than whole or in part. What that means is that it's only the part of the larger development that is not going to remain in agriculture that requires the A O T permit. I know it it seems strange the way it's written.
It does to me.
That that's the way it's interpreted. And the intent of it, that the alteration of terrain program, because there's a statutory exemption. But what they don't want is, and it's not necessarily intended for something of this, but it just falls under that category, is, you know, someone says, you know, we have Bob's Chicken Farm, they go out and clear five hundred acres and then, you know, turn me into a park.
Yeah, I I get that.
But as long as, you know, the part that he remains with in the agriculture use, they still have it for me.
Okay.
It might help the board to consider E N V W Q fifteen oh three oh two B, which addresses your question. It says, if a project includes development that requires an A O T permit and normal agricultural operations that do not need a permit, an application shall be submitted only for the development that requires an A O T permit.
Okay.
It just, just so you understand as well, the board understands, I sent the same plan you're looking at to Mike Smocher when during the conversation. Because I knew it was going to come up with the board and I had been over the, over time requesting that he send a written statement, which he did.
So then you're saying that three, number three and then B one is, as long as that excess of ten thousand square feet is for an agricultural purpose, it is exempt?
That's correct. And again, I believe the reason the state has that is they don't want.
I guess what I'm having a problem with Doug is that this, this agricultural purpose lot is still part of this subdivision. So, I mean, I I get that if this were a separate piece, but because we're, we're subdividing the actual lot and lot line adjusting it. And I get what fifteen oh three oh two B is saying. I just am having a hard time separating the whole subdivision and the use piece of it, but I'll get there.
Okay.
I'll second that.
You have any other questions regarding the A O T permit?
No, not.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, other comments from the board? Or questions? Betsy, did you have your hand up?
Well, it's kind of hard to see the plan, but.
Can I zoom in?
The, I just wanted to point out that in some places, so our town zoning prohibits clear cutting within a hundred feet of the wetland. And I, you can tell from the tree line, I I noticed when I was out there walking that it, that that has in places that's, it's been clear cut within a hundred feet, just something we need to address.
Okay.
Yeah, I had a question actually for, I'm sorry, I should have raised my hand.
Yes, Sarah.
But along the same lines, the, um, the, the tree line as depicted on this plan. And what I observed from our sidewalk don't actually mesh. I, yes, I believe there were some remainder trees left in the area between the buildable envelope and the wetland itself on eighteen two and eighteen three, but my recollection from the sidewalk was that's, that's really, it's not a tree line anymore. That's just remainder trees up until the wetland. It's not an undisturbed tree line anymore, as it appears to depict here.
We locate as hard tree line, all the scattered trees would be beyond that point.
So what you're saying is the tree line is depicted on this plan, is the original dense tree line not never disturbed?
It's the hard tree line that runs around to all the major trees that are on site and all the trees, whether it was voids, whether it was any clear cutting ready for that nature, this is the hard tree line that exists there. The original tree line.
And it still exists?
It still exists.
Boy, that flies right in the face of what I observed on the ground, but I'll go out and take another look.
I was just out there the other day and those are my measurements.
Okay. Can I change the subject? Doug, I had one other quest, not Doug, John, I have one other question. On three seventeen, there are no over twenty five percent slopes on the back of that?
Can you pan over there so I can see? I have all the, all the steep slopes have been attached. No, there's, there's none over there.
I'm looking at sheet.
Right here.
Yeah.
So through, right below where the test pit, or right around where the test pit.
Yeah, somewhere between five and ten percent. That's not a steep slope area.
That's five and ten percent?
Likely, because I can actually give you a real number, but. So you want to. Yeah. Can you scale?
Yeah.
One second, we're just going to put a scale on it, see what the difference is between contours.
Maybe it's the way my plan printed.
Could be if you have a reduced copy, but.
I do.
Could you be careful not to talk at the same time among yourself? Because when you do that, it comes over very garbled. I don't know if you know that, so that's my experience. So you're, you're talking to your attorney, I think, back and forth among yourself, and then I, it's hard to understand what you're saying, which for me.
I'm the only one talking in the room. Sorry, Doug, just gonna be one more second, but basically we have computer software, there's generates the contours. And we also are able to categorize any slope in the property in different categories between zero and eight, eight fifteen, whatever we want to tell it. So when we tell it that number, we can actually come up with an outline of any slopes or areas that are acceptable twenty five percent. That's categorized inside the zoning orders. The only place where there was any slopes was on the back sides of the proposed lots. Four lots, those are hatched, I think it's, yes.
Right here.
Yep.
Three eighteen two is where I saw.
You know, height those contours are, and that, that area is an acceptable twenty five percent. But no, definitely not on three seventeen.
You also have considerable slopes, if I'm, if I'm reading your soils information correctly and your contour lines. The, I'm also concerned about the fifteen to twenty five percent slope, which our regulations, rules and regulations protect those steep slopes with erosion control measures when that land is disturbed, which of course it has been. And I'm, I'm particularly concerned about the amount of fifteen to twenty five percent slope on lots three, eighteen four, eighteen three, all four of those lots, as well as seventeen.
The only place where there's any slope even in excess of fifteen percent, I think, would be at the lower portion of lot two, but I mean, without sitting here with a ruler, I couldn't tell you the exact area. That's, that's over twenty five percent there. It's a really tight contour.
Yeah. I'm at fifteen, I'm asking about fifteen to twenty five percent, or fifteen to twenty four point nine percent, which your soils data key identifies as one forty two, one forty three C and is designated right on the area and eight on four and three and also not on seventeen, on four and three. Which your key says is between fifteen and thirty five percent slopes?
To one forty three D.
Sorry, one forty three D, which the key reads, it's between fifteen and thirty five percent slopes, and it is right there. One forty three D. So you're telling me that's not between fifteen and thirty five percent slopes there?
No, so these soil maps go pretty far back. You know, basically, the only topography that they had to base these maps off was nineteen thirties U S G S contour maps. And when they derive these maps, it hasn't been changed to them in years besides the characteristics of the soils themselves. So, I mean, we did, we have the product of on the ground contours. We have something we didn't have the benefit of, but we're labeling the one forty three D per the the soil map. So that's what they show for that area. And you can see it's a huge general area. No, there's no slopes in that area besides what we've depicted that are over that percentage. If you wanted to see something more scrutinized, we could certainly show you that.
I just, I remember it being very steep in the backside of, not that far back, in, in all three of those lots, two through four.
Development in any of those areas, and that's all outside of that area.
I'm sorry, what would you say by development?
Anywhere where there's slope to that degree, like on lot two, it's all outside the setback areas. It's nowhere we're doing any improvement or proposing any improvements. It's all outside the building setback area.
But it's still in the area that's been disturbed?
No, we have the, the area that's undisturbed, show the tree line.
Done. Did you do a slope analysis? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah. For the, for the whole property?
For the whole property, yes.
And were you just looking for over twenty five percent? Or what was, what did you plug in there?
Well, we were asked for the regulations is to depict any slopes over excess of twenty five percent which be shown.
Yeah.
That's what I have depicted on the plan.
Right. Okay.
The areas we're proposing improvements, I mean, that's from the road back to where we're proposing improvements, the bottom of that setback line, that's, that's a gentle area. I mean, that's between zero and eight percent slopes. That's relatively flat from the road back until we get to the back of the property where it dips down.
Yeah. So you've got this area, this area here, I can see.
Yep.
Those are over twenty five percent.
Yeah.
Unbuildable.
But my question is, where's the fifteen to twenty five percent, which it doesn't look it's like it's been mapped and, and.
We were never asked to replace those on the plan.
Well, a court, the, the, here's my, one of my issues is that, is that in order to, all of our regulations say that we should be able to evaluate this land prior to the work that has been done in the land. So I'm thinking of it in terms of, okay, but now we look and we see this land and I saw what I thought were fifteen to twenty five percent slopes. I am not a certified surveyor. I also saw land that I, that had been stripped that was on, that was eroding while I was on the sidewalk. So that area in particular concerned me greatly as far as what I saw already coming down the hill. Our, our subdivision regulations under section five, I believe it's, I mean, section, yeah, five H, is very specific about what shall and shall not happen on slopes between fifteen and twenty five percent. And, and it's basically saying you cannot disturb it. All of this has been disturbed. And, and I'm having a problem trying to put that genie back in the bottle and protect the wetlands.
Right. And, and anything that is between fifteen and twenty four point nine would require an erosion control plan?
Yes. And because it has been disturbed, I think we should see an erosion control plan for any fifteen to twenty five percent slope.
We will be doing that when we do the A O T permit. Anything that has to do with the A O T, they're going to require stabilization, all that stuff. Doug can speak to that. If you'd like to hear about it.
Okay.
That'd be great.
So long as that will last.
Just getting some more steps in.
So one of the parts of the A O T permit, as John mentioned, we'll have to do an erosion control plan, including post-construction stabilization. This, uh, was that following? No, I guess that one's following through the E P A one, but.
You're kind of garbled. Is there a better mic?
What I was saying is, hard A O T permit left to do an erosion control, erosion and segmentation control plan, not only for during a construction period, but also for post-construction. That's one part of it. So you will end up with an erosion control plan as part of it.
Is that per lot or do you do it for the whole development?
Because it would be for the whole development. Because the area has been deemed as disturbed and the areas within lots eighteen one through eighteen four would be considered the development.
And does that consider any, like, I know you don't have, of course, a final grading plan, but.
Well, probably what we'll end up doing is, you know, you're going to need a septic plan for each one of these lots. So generally speaking, when they're individual lots like this, we do, it's effectively a lot grading, probably will show the driveway as well as erosion controls and other necessary things.
Yeah. Yeah, because some of the septic areas are bordering on pretty steep areas. Especially on lot one.
Yeah.
Where it's going to need some.
Yeah. There's certainly not out of the ordinary for areas where we're normally designed septic systems. I mean, I designed septic on parcels where the slope sort of excess of thirty five percent.
Yeah.
In our systems, you can do that, where you can bench the septic systems with the grade of the land. It's not a typical stone pipe system, but there are other systems available.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying that's what. And I'm not saying that's what would be proposed on this, I mean, keep in mind that four K area is much larger than, the actual area that would be necessary for a typical single-family home.
Yep.
I, I have a question about, uh, back to vegetation, um, and I just want to clarify that, with putting in a vegetative buffer, you've got note sixteen on page one, that specifies adding three native trees. Is that the extent of that vegetative buffer?
It's also protecting any of the trees that are existing along Stevens Road.
So, I'm curious about the number three, like, how that was determined to be enough of a buffer?
We have three hundred feet of, uh, frontage, and we figured that if you put trees fifty feet apart, and there's three trees in front of each home, it would make it more appealing.
Okay.
There's already a, a good number of existing trees that are out there, but to locate every single one of the individual sporadic trees, um, the plan would be dotted, um, you know, and obviously there's gonna be additional improvements. So all we were looking at is that, if they were gonna be doing any improvements, that it would make the effort to plant trees in the front yard, to shield the, the home from the road.
Right, but your vegetative buffer is for one tree per lot?
Three.
Three.
Oh, three trees, three trees per lot.
That doesn't seem to correspond to the definition of, of a vegetative buffer in either our zoning ordinance or our guidance and subdivision regulations.
Well, that would be if a landscaping plan was required, then that's the definition of our landscaping plan, correct?
And you have not provided a landscaping plan at this point, right? That's, your three trees are not what you consider a landscaping plan.
We're not required for, uh, the subdivision plan to require, um, a landscaping plan. This was us showing you we were gonna make an attempt to plant some trees along the road, but that was based on.
Right, but. Yeah, so, when I look at section five, A, A point, eight, uh, four, preservation of existing features, which the applicant hopefully will bring to us. And the divider shall identify and give due regard to the preservation and protection of existing features such as trees, scenic points, brooks, stone walls, streams, rock, outcroppings, water bodies, aquifers, public areas, historic landmarks, and other natural resources. But we're kind of boxed in a corner because it's gone.
But you are preserving former trees. Yeah, well, I mean, hear me out, we're, we're adding some trees, it's trees on site, and there's gonna be more sites in yards as well. Um, we're offering to, to put some trees in the front yards to set a buffer.
Yeah, I think, go ahead.
I think that what the, what the ordinance and the regulations suggest is that you should be restoring the vegetative buffer, it, three trees is not bringing that, that, and, and it, and it's not just our regulations, it's all, I mean, you look at the, at the, um, RSA, what is it, two, two, two twenty-seven, um, which talks about protections for neighborhoods and, and, uh, environmentally sensitive areas, and they ask for a hundred and fifty-foot, uh, undisturbed area between the road and on that, and so, I mean, to me, three trees per lot isn't even close to what we're, what I'm looking at as recommendations from both the state and the town as a buffering, uh, measure. We talked about putting buffers on these, we talked at the last meeting about putting buffers on these lots. I don't think three trees per lot is, would be considered a buffer.
Even though it'll also be people's front yards, I mean, you need to have all the trees there, they can't even be able to, for you.
But I, but I think that's the difference, you're talking about people's front yards, we're talking about protecting the neighborhood from the, from looking at a new development. In order to preserve the value of the neighborhood, the rural character of the neighborhood, and in order to comply with, um, existing rules and regulations for the master plan. What I think Jerry was saying was that, what, and what I think we've said at several public hearings is, we should have, as a board, been able to review this land prior to the cutting and grubbing of this property in order to, to be able to, and I think a lot of our concerns would have been ameliorated if we could have said, you know, great, put your houses in, but you gotta leave this many trees and this much, and you gotta protect these wetlands, and you're, but we, we're, we're now asked, being asked to start from D with no voice in A, B, and C, so you've got us between a rock cropping and a tree place, so, you know, what, uh, what my concern is, how do we approve this if we don't ask for some sort of restoration of existing conditions which were required for us to review before we could approve this?
Uh, excuse me, Jason Billigus for the applicant, wasn't there a notice to cut?
Yes, we're talking about apples and oranges here. We're talking about a, a, a timber harvest area, and then, and then ours, and then a subdivision, so it's, it's not the same. It's not the same thing, it's not at all the same thing.
So they asked the town to get, they give the town notice that they can cut, the town grants it, and now the town's saying, well, you shouldn't have cut that?
Yeah, pretty much.
And, and I think the other piece is the town, I mean, the intent to cut, as I understood it, and the Shaddix confirmed last meeting, was to create a pasture. That was what the reason, the intent of that cut. And it.
And that's very different rules.
Right, and we know, I mean, I, I work in equestrian real estate, and the common question is, how long does it take to go from forest to pasture? Minimally, three years. So if there was an intent to cut for a pasture that a couple months later turned into a subdivision, that's just a different, that's just a different, you know, application, different intent.
Well, let, let me ask this question, so, one, one of the issues, at least from, that was brought up before from the road, um, it seemed to me had to do with preserving the rural character and the, and, uh, and keeping somewhat of the look that had appeared before this all happened, and so, I was wondering, I frankly thought, um, was hoping in any event, uh, that your client would be willing to have more of a buffer inside the stone wall other than those trees that are remaining that, um, unless they, you know, i- immediately adjacent to the stone wall, unless they have to remove from. So, I wondered why, uh, and it, had you given any consideration to that? I'm not, I'm not talking about a hundred and fifty foot or even a hundred foot vegetative buffer, but some buffer that, um, would, uh, ameliorate the, the change in appearance and help preserve the rural character, and it seems to me that would be possible, and people would still be able to have an open front yard. Um, did you give any consideration to that, and if, if, if you, if, if you decided against it, um, 'cause I think there was talk about that at the last meeting, uh, why, why did you decide against it?
Sir, Jason Billigus for the applicant, at the last meeting, you expressed an interest in a vegetative buffer, and I asked you if that was gonna be a condition of the subdivision, and you said no.
No, I think you misunderstood me, we were just talking about ideas, I couldn't, as an individual, say what was gonna be a condition of the subdivision, so without getting technical, I, and, but, wait a minute, that's my question, you don't have to answer if you don't think it's an appropriate question. But my question is, did you consider have a, a more substantial, what do you, uh, buffer, vegetative buffer than what you proposed, 'cause it seems like that may help move this along. And if you decided that you couldn't do it, or it was unreasonable to do it, um, uh, maybe, and, and, if you did, I, that was the judgment, I was, I wonder what was the basis of that?
So, the trees that were cut, it was a good deal that was cut on the, on the, on the lot, for, but there's a good deal that was left behind, a good amount of trees that are, are, are in existence. From a town standpoint, it would be a policing nightmare, um, someone breaks out a lawnmower, they gotta go out there, and only can't cut it, it's a vegetative buffer. Um, we figured by adding the trees to the front yard, we're putting something there that's not there now, and we're adding to it, and we're preserving all the natural characters by saying the stone wall and trees along the road were tough and be disturbed. So from my standpoint, I felt that that was a reasonable, um, choice of, um, how to, to mitigate, you know, the front yards and the appeal.
Okay, well, I think that's where you're getting, at least part of the pushback, and so I guess the question is whether or not, um, uh, that, you know, your client would consider something more substantial other than planting, leaving trees immediately adjacent to the stone wall, uh.
Oh, there's gonna be also the three trees in the front yard.
Trees in the front yard, yeah, I get that, it was whether or not, um, your client willing to consider that something more substantial than that, that would do a better job of, of, uh, you know, uh, preserving the view from the road and, and the character, so, of the, of the area. I was wondering if they considered that, and it seems like that might help move this along, 'cause I think the, at least the concern I hear expressed, uh, part of the concern I hear expressed by my fellow board members is that, um, uh, you know, three trees in the front yard probably aren't gonna be enough. They don't, um,
Yeah.
sufficiently protect the, the view or, or the character. And that's, that is something we're entitled to consider, and so I guess I was a bit, um, and no, I didn't propose a particular condition, I, I was just honestly trying to get the conversation going, to see if we could, uh, move it along.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, but that's, that's one of the issues, and so the question is, is there any way to move on this? I mean, um, if, yeah, because, you know, a few trees in the front yard, I don't think moves it very far.
No. Um, there's also the issue, I mean, there's, I think, you know, the clearing, their disregard for the basal area law, um, this is the issue, and frankly, speaking of conditions, we, as a board, met with town council to go over some possible conditions, which include, um, a much more robust, uh, planting buffer in the front of the lots, as well as restoring any um, areas around the wetlands, and, excuse me, and the steep slope areas, um. But we also like to see, uh, you know, someone who is either a licensed L A or a, or, you know, a natural wildlife forestry professional who could come up with that plan. And have specific species, and, you know, look at this as a native restoration rather than just three trees of some kind we want, you know, we'd like to see it restored to, uh, what you see out there in, in that habitat that exists now. And that would be, you know, that's a much bigger deal than three trees somewhere in the front.
All the loggers that had done the site had to adhere to the old, his old RSAs, and the trees that were cleared, the clear, they're not allowed to remove more than fifty percent.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
I can't hear.
I mean, maybe, no. The, the RSA is speak to, not supposed to remove more than fifty percent of the basal area, which the logger had gone out and removed the trees, so we have fifty percent of the remaining basal area in those areas. And I don't see why adding, you know, a few more trees in the front yard wouldn't adhere to that, I don't see why this would be a huge restoration planting by not knowing what was there.
I, I think, for me, this is where the difficulty comes in, because we have, when I look at the character of Stevens Road, and I also hear, um, the sentiment of the abutters, and we also look at the master plan, which calls that area out specifically to warrant special protection, um, it's really about preservation of the character of that area as well. I mean, those things, those things make a difference, if you drive down Stevens Road and you look at what's there now, there isn't that, four houses, you know, in a row that are visible from the road that have that kind of, you know, clear-cut division.
So are you, are you just refusing, are you not budging on the, on the?
I don't know what other comments you have.
I don't understand, like, we do.
Uh, I, I think that's a pretty severe comment to say, let's do, from the forester, and we plant the front of all these lots where there's no requirement to that degree.
No.
Jerry, I, I have a question for you, um, you've said that you do not like the number three. What number do you have in mind?
I, I think it depends on what's there in the site. I am a landscape architect, so I understand what the planting plan is, and what it would take. Uh, you can't just give me a number, I think it depends on, I know, professional judgment on what would be appropriate, and what's there, and what species are appropriate. It's not that, it's not that simple.
But instead of us guessing at what you're looking for, why don't you tell us what you're looking for?
I don't think as, uh, you know, keep in mind, we haven't made any decisions here. You're talking to individual board members, so, um, uh, so what you're hearing are we haven't decided, so.
Correct.
Hard, hard to say, this is what'll do it, uh, but it's, it's fairly clear, it seems like, at least from the people that have spoken, that three trees per lot probably is not gonna do it. And so, um, and so, um, you know, we haven't taken a vote on it, but it seems like it may be headed in that direction. So, I guess we could, you, you can say that's, you know, I guess the question at, at this point, is that as much as you're willing to do? If it is, we'll move on and, and talk about other, we can move on and talk about other things, and we'll decide what we're gonna decide, but it's.
We're all reading.
It seems like a way of moving along is, is agreeing to some kind of ve- vegetative that, uh, buffer, the exact amount we can, we can determine, but, but if it's, if it's like, no, it's not on the table for you, it's not on the table. I guess if you don't think it's appropriate, you can move along.
So one possibility could be an approval with the condition that there will be a vegetative buffer.
Is that something your client would agree with?
I think we're open to, to those comments, we're just trying to figure out what you suggested is, as far as how in-depth or severe this would be. So, I mean, understanding what you're looking for would be.
Well, we were hoping that you would take our requests from last time seriously and come back to us with a vegetative buffer plan, which is not what we are seeing, so.
So why is it?
I, you know, I think.
Are you, are you going to want a vegetative buffer to then monitor?
Uh, did, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
Would you want to have a vegetative buffer to then monitor to understand what's there and not there all the time?
Uh, we would like vegetative buffer that will, um, yeah, will stay there and, and not be disturbed or cut, um, from that place if it dies.
Right, and, and I don't know how that happens, um, I'm not a legal expert, whether it's some sort of, you know, notation on a plan that's recorded, um, that has to be adhered to, or whether it's in the deed, I really don't know. But yes, the idea is for it to be somewhat, to provide some assurance going forward that the, once the property conveys, that somebody's not gonna. that the, once the property conveys, that somebody's not gonna cut everything down.
Right.
Uh, Ms. Bernstein, you can put your conditions either in the written decision that you make and or notes on the plan.
Oh, okay.
Karen, maybe you should read what we, the language that um uh you had had run by town council?
Yep. Um, can I?
Can we have one second just to confer, please?
Could you, I'm sorry, what?
Mind if we had one second just to confer?
Yeah, yeah.
One second, please.
I'm gonna, can I stop sharing or do we still need, I can, I can share again, but I just gotta stop for a minute.
Madam Chair, this is Attorney Manzali. Can I make a comment?
Well, they're they're conferring, so maybe I should wait.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm happy to wait. I just wanted to um make a comment before the the board moved into any sort of final action.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I actually saw Greg Neely's note. Um, and I think there's a point there. We, this is a new plan or there's, there's a, this is a revised plan that we are all looking at tonight. And it may be prudent to open uh the discussion of to the public again.
I think we need to um really think about this timeline line that we're under and, you know, getting
I guess we're
getting toward decision tonight or an extension. That's the two.
I understand, but I still think if we don't, at least a lot with a revision to the plan, I think we need to at least maybe limit it to twenty minutes or something and and uh and and ask people and specifically just, but I do think we're we're remiss if we don't open to some public comment.
I agree. I would agree too.
Well, what do you do with the timeline? So you've had a fair amount of public comment, not that we can't have any, but we also need time to deliberate and
Right.
So we, I mean, you can let it go too long, honestly.
What are the other issues that we have on the plan? Are we gonna be stuck on this um on this vegetative buffer or were there other issues that you've had to comment on once we got past this this hurdle?
Um, okay, so some of the items that um we have drafted and
Drafted, yeah, I think, right? I don't think we we drafted.
It's a draft.
Okay.
Okay, it's not, you know, to be considered a draft. Uh, so obviously the permits that we're waiting for once, you know, if and when this is approved, um, the buffer restoration um along Stevens Road, buffer plantings around the wetlands where needed and um steep slope areas and between lots one and three eighteen.
And are you talking about steep slopes in excess of fifteen percent, right? Not just steep, steep slopes. But steep slopes requiring erosion control plans.
Correct.
Which I think should be designated on the plan.
If there's areas that are around fifteen percent or more where I haven't designated, I will speak to it, but I just don't have the ability to put a rule on.
Okay.
And jump to that.
Existing boundary interior stone walls are retained and uh they're on the plan. Um, identification of the buried stones, which I see you have shown on the plan. Um, the existing stone walls, rocks, existing, existing features that we asked for the stream. Um, you have those on the plan. I haven't asked for comment on uh whether those were sufficient with the board, but that's another item to talk about. Um, and then the the erosion control plan for any areas in excess of fifteen percent um within seventy-five feet of the wetland areas or drainage waves. Um, and and we also are talking about building envelopes shown as designated by the board and then no further subdivisions of lot three eighteen. Those are the draft conditions that we discussed with our town council as as possible uh conditions. So I I think the the buffer restoration is a really big part of that. Um,
Wow.
And I would like to just um get some comments from, especially from Betsy, whether you looked, you know, at at the addition for the stream, calling out the stream, some of the the um items from the Conservation Commission.
As far as being on the plan?
Yeah.
I I think that there, I have to say, I worked till four thirty and didn't get home till five, so I had a very short period to look at the plan.
Okay.
Um, Chair, could you just run through those conditions one more time? I just wanna make sure I got them all.
Yep. I can, um. Okay, so the DEA subdivision permit is a given, I mean, we can't approve it without that, and we talked about that before. The AOT permitting um application as well.
I don't know if you're agreeable.
Buffer re- uh restoration, which is the road frontage buffer. Um, so we're asking for a depth of hundred feet from the center line of the road. Planting plan by licensed landscape architect or wildlife habitat specialist that will restore the natural vegetative buffer along Stevens Road. Planting shall include native tree shrub species found in the surrounding natural woodlands. Species shall be determined using guidance from UNH extension, either the good forestry um document or um some approved official state guidance. Um, and planting shall be provided in quantities and variety to support the growth to establish the vegetative buffer.
So it's basically, if I can summarize, it's just two, the AOT and then the buffer.
And then uh we'd like to see the other item, and this is again a draft.
Yeah.
Is a no-cut zone established for that buffer um in order to get it reestablished. Um, we're also looking for escrow funds or performance bond um for the professional consultation, oversight, design and planting of the buffer.
Um. You know, saplings or
Is this discussion supposed to be something that we're, we can hear or not?
It is, it is, but we just
We can't.
Who's gonna propose the uh information to you or, hang on one second, it's Hang on one second, let's take, let's, Chair.
Yep.
Yeah. So in terms of the, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
In terms of the buffer restoration and planting, um would the board entertain a planting plan done by a professional forester who would, you know, restore the vegetative buffer like they would typically after clear cut, where they use smaller saplings, because it's gonna take a significant number of plantings to really restore it correctly. And I mean, that will take a little longer for them to grow and become restorative, but.
Um, I don't think that
Our our law, we have a buffer definition in our zoning.
Yeah.
I believe the buffer definition relates to pipe plants. I could be incorrect, but I mean, four to five foot tall minimum pipe tree.
It's pretty small. I think
Those are very, they get expensive quite quickly. Versus, I mean, keep in mind, you keep talking about well, preservation of character of the area, historic district and what the National Forest Register talked about was the field. They didn't talk about forests and maintenance of forests. That's just what you've been used to for the past several years. However,
Yeah, we, we
Quite frankly, it's just you don't wanna look at something and you drive down the road.
Yeah.
Or frank and honest about it, but you also don't own the property. So if you wanna keep it a certain way, maybe the town can take some funds and propose buying it in the chat. That's my personal opinion. But in any event, uh, that's just a a question I have as a request in terms of getting some sort of restoration of the forest buffer.
Yeah, I I I think um uh, I I don't think maybe we haven't decided that, but I I I urge my board members to be reasonable. Um, it uh, and if there's alternatives to uh to help restore the land, that maybe not everything everybody wants, but uh but it will move it back in the right direction. I would urge people to consider it honestly uh to make. Um, so um they're right, this was once a field, not that long ago. Um, and so uh as far as historical arguments, they some, that's true. It it they cut both ways to a certain extent, but so I think it behooves us to be uh uh consider other options. I I personally think a hundred-foot vegetative barrier that goes all the way, um, you know, it takes the entire setback is, we could probably, at least me personally, I could live with less than that, for example. Um, so I think one thing we have to remind ourselves is that we um um that, you know, a rule of reason will maybe apply, maybe not everything everybody wants, but um, I I just urge to think of the alternatives. I don't, that's my own personal point of view.
Okay. Betsy?
Yeah, so first it's just, you know, we talk about the historic field, we're not talking about a field. We're talking about a subdivision with houses, not the same thing. But I'd also, I I think I tend to agree with Brad that maybe we could do something less than the hundred feet, and I don't know that I necessarily wanna see, wanna see something that looks natural. Not all trees, but a mix of, you know, shrubs, blueberries, whatever is appropriate for that particular location. Um, a a mix of vegetation, nat- native vegetation. I I don't think it needs to be a whole bunch of trees. I I'd rather see a a mix of stuff, which is really, I think, more appropriate anyways.
Yeah, that's what the condition
But again, part of our condition is talking about getting it professionally designed. Um, so, you know, we can all weigh in on what we would like to see, but I think relying on somebody who will create a plan that will become a natural vegetative buffer is the smart way to go. The depth, we, yeah, we can argue whether a hundred feet or Brad's, I don't know what Brad's thinking, but um uh guidance from from state law at a hundred and fifty feet uh would mean that it should be somewhere, yes, I agree, it doesn't have to be a hundred and fifty feet, but it shouldn't, it should be significant enough to keep the protections that are afforded by uh two twenty-seven and and the basal um uh law, sorry, I'm I don't And I think a no-cut zone will help advance that as well. It doesn't, I mean, I think the, as long as we do enough to give it a a solid buffer now, um adding a no-cut zone will naturally create a a more extensive buffer within ten years, so.
Chair, if I could just follow up on, uh, somebody mentioned the zoning ordinance, and I've said this before, I don't think the zoning ordinance applies because we're not in front of the ZVA, we're in front of the planning board, and planning board applies. But if for some reason you wanted to look at the zoning ordinance, what the zoning ordinance says
We do.
The buffer is a strip of land at least ten feet wide with trees or shrubs four feet high at time of planning that will form a year-round death screen at least six feet high within three years. So if you do wanna go over to zoning, you're looking at ten feet wide, four feet high.
That's minimum, I believe, is it not? And yes, we do wanna go over zoning because as a planning board, we must comply with the zoning ordinance. It's the law of the town of Francis Town. It is not the zoning board's law. It is the law of the town of Francis Town.
But if, so if you think that there's a zoning issue, then you would refer this to the zoning board for their determination.
I think some of this has to be judgmental, and the board has the discretionary ability to apply various specifications on what is the buffer. Because what, what, again, and I've said this before and at risk of repetition, the master plan asks us to use our guidance, uh, to, for it to be our, the guide for us making decisions going forward, and we have an obligation to the applicant, the abutters, the whole town to withhold. It's not just a useless piece of paper. It guides all the future development. And that area is designated as being protected. So the board has the discretionary ability to empower to to, you know, put something in place that is a little more significant than zoning.
Well, the way the master plan was read was that it's also suggestions for the town to to adapt or adopt rules where they see holes, and it was suggested to have a historic just great place in the town, and as house people voted it down, also as part of the master plan, it it, you know, it's hard to have the opportunity for, you know, more people to be able to to have children and to grow to grow throughout Francis Town. And, you know, those, those are the parts that you guys aren't putting uh any focus on, you're putting more focus on 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 trees, on an area that historically was a field. We're trying to meet you with some um, you know, halfway with what we feel is appropriate. And I think that, you know, what you're asking for is it's it's pretty severe from that standpoint.
I don't, I'm not sure I would qualify three trees as halfway for one. Yeah, and I I think we need, I think we need to just hear from you, like, this, this suggest that this draft buffer restoration, is it, you know, is it something acceptable? I mean, is something that we can move forward with? That's what we need. And I, and I'd really like to just kinda
No, we're not on the table for that.
So no?
No, no.
Okay, so I'd like to just poll at this point, what time is it? Seven thirty? I'm wondering if we could just poll the board, not vote for acceptance of the plan as it is without these conditions. Just to see where we are, because I mean, honestly, uh, I don't wanna argue about zoning board, planning board, you know, what you think we should buy the you know, the property, et cetera. It doesn't make any sense to to do that if we're not getting anywhere.
Agreed.
So I, I'm wondering if we could just pull the board right now as it stands, the client is not willing to talk or or consider the most important um draft condition.
You know, I have a problem with this approach. One is that you keep on saying we, this was a draft, not adopted by the board.
It's not adopted, it's a draft.
It, well, it's a proposal by a board member, and so
It is based on our discussion with
Well, no, honestly not. So you, uh, honestly, you, you came up with conditions that are fine, but we haven't discussed and 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 honestly, um, uh, board members here aren't thoroughly familiar with them, so I
See, but Brad, I disagree. This, this to me summarizes what we've discussed all along.
I I don't
In every single public hearing, we've discussed a buffer. In every single public hearing, we've discussed a buffer, in every single one.
Yeah, also Karen.
Okay, but you, you're proposing a buffer with very specific conditions that, um, that, so, maybe, uh, so. Oh, I guess we could say, are, are, or, or, or we can accept it as written? Or is it A or B? Is that where we are now?
I, I think, isn't that what Karen wants to do is to? Brad, I don't mean to talk over you. Karen wanted to do, to conduct a poll, and I think you have every right to express your opinion when she solicits. What the board members.
I, I, I think there, it would be nice if we, um, oh, well, go ahead, go.
And Karen, are, are you basically asking for our opinion as to whether we can approve the plan as presented? Without a buffer condition?
Yes, because that seems to be where we are, unless there, you know. And, and I have to say, we discussed these conditions. And then I was asked to run them by the town council once again, just to make sure. Uh, which is where we are now. I have a draft. And. Nothing has been, uh, accepted or voted on by the board. And I, you know, I, I understand that you'd like to see less, less of the. A depth of the buffer, that's, that's possible change in the condition, since it is a draft. But it sounds like the client is unwilling to consider the buffer in any way, so I just.
Wait, to clarify, the client is amenable to reasonable and economically reasonable buffer.
And what are you proposing that would be?
Yeah, so I mean, what, what do you, what's your sense of the cost of this hundred-foot buffer? I mean, how much is one, how much is one tree?
I, 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 I'm, I'm not gonna.
You're asking for, you know, twenty thousand dollars worth of trees throughout the property.
Yeah, so it's kind of, it's a backdoor way to stop development. Say, oh, well, you need to have. You know, five hundred thousand dollars worth of trees to do a development. You're not going to have development.
I don't see it that way at all. I see it as an absolute critical component. To maintaining the character and the preservation of the rural quality in that section of town.
As well as protection for the environmental issues and, uh, the historic nature of the neighborhood and the value of the neighborhood because of that.
Well, why don't, why don't we stick with the regulations that the town, the, the people of the town of Francis Town voted in?
So, that is a definition, not a regulation. The regulations say a buffer must be at a minimum. What that definition is, but the board has full discretion to decide. What the buffer should be, and what I believe the board has said since day one of our public hearings. Is that a buffer would protect the neighborhood from the look of the subdivision. Nothing you guys have said tonight. Instills that confidence in me as one board member.
Subdivision regulation doesn't say that you need a buffer.
We've, we've been talking about a buffer since the beginning as a way to. Abate the impact of this development on our property. And in the subdivision regulations under five H, it talks about. If any disturbance of land to be subdivided is going to happen. We need a, a, a significant, basically, it prohibits disturbance of the land prior to subdivision. So you guys are asking us to, to go backwards before we go forward, and that's, I think. The root of a lot of our concerns, and the only way that we've been able to figure out how to ameliorate that concern. Is to restore the vegetative buffer that was there, that we should have had been able to see before we even considered this proposal.
Well, that's actually, that's not exactly what the subdivision regulation says. Um, if you get into B fourteen, it talks about site preparation. And it says where practical, natural vegetation of the slope lines shall be retained. That's where practical, and I think by practical there, we're talking about economic practicality.
Well, that's an interpretation. I, I, well, you know, it doesn't, you know, we're, we're not able to. Uh, even talk about this because the site is gone. Like, if we were starting with, with, you know, the site being. Uh, the way it was originally. I don't even know that we would be having this whole conversation, but. Right now, we're trying to restore the character and also protect some of the. Sensitive areas on the site, um, and we're also understand that, you know. The, the site is, um, as presented in the plan. Uh, the, you know, the site has a right to be developed, so we're trying to find a compromise here that will. Um, you know. Work for the owner and work for the town. Now, as you were, we're in this, you know, series of meetings here, and you, there's no shortage of, of butters who are not. Happy with what you've presented, and we've asked you a couple times for things that you've come back with. I wouldn't even say meet us halfway response. Um, so here we are, and I just feel like we're running out of time. We either. Extend our time allotment on this, that would, that would require the owner, um, accepting or, or. Uh, granting us an extension, or we vote, and I feel like that's where we are right now. And I, I just want to. You know, see if we can go forward tonight, because tonight's it. Tonight is the night that we vote. We either vote or, or we get an extension.
I wouldn't say that, or, or throw anything away, because you said they haven't offered anything tonight.
Sorry, I, we can't, I'm sorry, we can't.
At all.
Yeah.
I said Doug said that we didn't offer anything tonight, because we did also first offer three trees, and then he came back and when he said it wasn't enough. We offered to do something different. Doug could actually come up with what he said if we could use. A forestry replanting plan, which was a practical and economical approach to restoring that buffer. But with the way that you want it is not economical or practical. Uh, nor is it, you know, anything that the, the, the vegetative buffer was before.
Well, let's hear, let, let, let me just, just explain the forestry replanting plan and I'll let the board.
Yeah, what I was suggesting was is that. Either have a wildlife specialist or a certified forester come in.
You guys have to work on talking into your mics better.
Yeah, he's about a forestry replanting plan, very similar to like what they do after they. Uh, typically pure cut a parcel, they will come in and replant trees, such that it's replanted in a natural way, however. When they plant them, they are much smaller. They're generally sapling size, so it does take. A bit more time for the forest to restore, but you get a much more natural forest restoration. That's what we had suggested, and maybe not, you know, we were, we were thinking also with a slightly less depth along the frontage. You know, maybe something more in the realm of fifty feet, and in terms of the wetland buffer, restoring that back to the hundred-foot requirement.
To me, a little sapling is not a buffer. It's not going to protect.
Media and now, which is not going to happen.
I would really like to better understand the timeline of such a plan.
Or, as what? The growth timeline? Oh, yeah, you're talking decades.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say, you know, at least ten years before you get substantial-sized tree.
Oh, yeah, at least from a. It would, it's. I mean, could it be a combination of larger material and smaller stuff?
Again, I go back to professional opinion of a reasonable visual buffer. As well as a protective buffer, protection from.
Who are we protecting?
What are we protecting? Is that the question?
Well, in the back, we're protecting the wetland, and in the front, we're protecting the neighborhood.
In terms of the wetlands protection, it could very well be done, the combination of either unmoated metal and or forest. Which will eventually regrow to forest.
In twenty years.
However, from the front, you're talking about visual protection.
I mean, if, if you're talking about protecting the Tolmans, why don't you just ask them what they want to see for protection?
The Tolmans is not, not the only people in the neighborhood that are affected, A, and B, it's the view sheds from the area. It's the value of the neighborhood, it's, um, uh.
Just sort of the.
Your character of the neighborhood, all of those things.
Yeah.
Right, flipping like your property. And ours looks terrible on proffer.
Okay.
Well, that's our thing, yeah, so again, that's what, that's, that's what we can reasonably offer, is an economical approach.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, to say, have you considered putting in half a million dollars worth of trees, and why don't you meet us halfway there? I mean, that's not, that's not reasonable.
I don't think anyone put out the half million dollar number except for you. I don't, I don't remember talking about five hundred thousand dollars in trees, but.
But that's what it is at the end of the day, that's the problem.
Trees are around twenty or fifty dollars a piece, if you do the math, and try to plant all those. And this is what other people want to see on his property, not what he necessarily wants to see, and he's trying to meet you halfway for comedy. For something that's not a true requirement.
I'm comfortable with the vegetative buffer that we came up with as, um, uh, in our previous meetings, talking, when we talked about it. Um, well, we talked about using the basal law, we talked about, we talked about anything. Uh, between fifty and a hundred and fifty feet, so I think when Karen came up with a hundred, she was averaging it, and I'm comfortable with that.
So are we going to offer them to grow back naturally?
No, planted. No, I think we need to talk about, um, as Betsy talked about in her comments. We need to talk about a combination of different species of trees, different sizes of trees. So that it, it fills in and looks like a naturally occurring forest that's elsewhere in the neighborhood.
Can't hear you, Brad.
Um, can we go ahead?
With the polling?
Yes.
We're, okay.
Okay, is, do we need to discuss the proposed forestry planting? Does anyone have any comments about that besides Sarah and?
One question.
I think we need a more reasonable alternative than what we proposed. I think. Uh, proposal from the road is basically above view. Um, I, I think that's what it's about, and, and, yeah, and so I think the hundred-foot is more than neat. Um, but I, I, I do personally think if, just overall general thing. I think they've made some, uh, movement on their plan, as it is stands right now. No, I think some mores need, but, needed, but I, I can't say I personally agree. Uh, with all the proposals that were outlined, uh, in the draft, which I don't think everybody's even seen. But I think, um, that's what I think, and I think, um. Now, we, we have an obligation to apply the zoning laws and, and, and the subdivision laws, that's true. But I think we better make sure that the conditions we asked for, uh, are not just considerable. Be considered reasonable by us, but by others. I also know there was a mix of views from, um. The townsfolk who came, they, they went in different ways, honestly. But, but I think as far as protecting a view shed, um, I don't think a hundred buffer foot is required. Or anything close.
Okay, so what would you like to, if, if we were?
I would, I, you know, I think. I get, if, if the thing is, I, I would have a hard time if, if it's A and B. And the B is the conditions that, that they are proposed, um, saying we should deny it unless they accept those. I've had a very difficult time.
Yeah, we were, we've been kind of paused on vegetation, and then there were a couple other conditions that we met with council about that. We haven't even really. Gotten into.
I, 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 okay, go ahead. I, so I think we need to be reasonable in what, what we propose. And I think we ought to think about that.
And what is your idea of reasonable?
Well, I think it's the purpose for which, I mean, the, the argument, for example, that was ma- made from the road was primarily the view. That's true. That's what people talked about. They wanted kind of a tree canopy. You know, something had been before that gave a rural feel. Now, I guess, what does it take to, to have that? I mean, i- is that, is that what we're looking for, or are you looking for something that's much more extensive? Um, and so that's for one, that's, that I would, you know, I, I'm not an expert. But it seems like, uh, a hundred-foot vegetative barrier is much more than is probably required for that.
Okay.
And, um, and as, I don't know about the wetlands, but I, I think we need to be reasonable. And things that we really have a solid basis for, if that's what we're going to hang our hat on.
Betsy?
Yeah, um, I, I'm okay with, with less than the hundred-foot buffer. Particularly if it's a well-planted buffer. I think that's, you know, a hundred feet with a few trees. I'd rather see a less of a distance with a, a, you know, better planting, and, and it doesn't have to be all big stuff. I think I'd rather see a mix of stuff, and including, you know, maybe saplings, some shrubs, and maybe a few trees. I, I'm not stuck on that we have to have all big stuff. I think it's better to have a, a mix, I think is much more natural. And they do have, there are some trees along the road that, you know, they'll grow, they're getting more sunlight now, the, the canopy is going to increase. Um, so I, I sort of agree with Brad that we could be, we could diminish, you know, make that less.
So what are you thinking?
What's less? Like, I need, yeah.
Fifty feet, hundred seventy, I'm okay with fifty feet.
So fifty feet?
With a well-planted fifty feet.
Okay, fifty feet from the center line of the road or?
No, fifteen, fifty feet from the edge of the road.
From edge of road.
The walls, the boundary walls.
I could go, I could go in with fifty feet from the what, the stone wall bound, the, the, the side of the road.
I, I could too, but it also is.
As long as it's well-planted.
Well-planted, and that's sort of where we, what we don't have our arms around at this point. What, you know, what is well-planted to the applicant, what is well-planted to the board?
Well, we can go with Brad's visual buffer, we're, and we're, we're asking that it be professionally planned to create a visual buffer. So, at least that's what I think we've been talking about for the last three hearings. Um, so I would, I would suggest that any. Any professional that's being charged with creating a natural-looking. Visual buffer at a depth of fifty feet is going to give us a plan that is a collection of. Big trees, small trees, shrubs, blueberries, you know, stuff that grows in that area. Densely planted enough to keep a visual barrier of fifty feet from the side of the road. I could buy into that, pr- professionally planned and, and planted according to the recommendation.
It just doesn't work. It's very cost prohibitive. We're asking for something that just financially, it's just probably a whole project up the window, and. There's the whole reason why you guys want to, uh, to oppose something like this, and it's, it's just absurd, because it's just financially, it doesn't make sense. You're asking them to pull, you know, sixty thousand dollars out of their. You're asking them to pull, you know, sixty thousand dollars out of their pocket to plant some trees along the front because you guys want to see them when there's not a requirement to that degree. I think to ask for a vegetative buffer and allow it to grow back would be one thing. But to ask for a buffer, then to ask for it to be replanted, also want it to be done by a certified, you know, landscape architect and to have matured trees, that's not even realistic.
Yeah, I can empathize with that, Doug. The thing that I think is that rock and hard place analogy again is that we, we have not had the opportunity, we've not been afforded the opportunity to look at this prior to that clear cut.
No, this land that he's speaking of, and you're asking him for something that's on his land. What he's done is is right. You're asking for something to be backed to, and you're not willing to budge on how it gets to that point. It's not a requirement. We offered things. You're saying, no, you're actually throwing things in that are cost prohibitive and not even reasonable.
I mean, do you know that even at fifty feet, you're talking about a sixty thousand square foot buffer?
I think that we've made some attempts here. We've let you know that we could do some things. We could do some forest, forest plan as far as the replantings go. But we, we can't do the things you're asking for that is not reasonable.
I don't agree with you. I think this is very reasonable.
Well.
How much, what is he praying for? I think you got to get some opinion.
What, what's the price that you think what you're asking for will cost?
I'm not a landscape architect, but I would suspect that when, and I also think that we're, we're, because of the nature of this condition, we'll ask for either an escrow or a performance bond to cover the cost of this project. So we need to get quotes on it before we could condition that, but. Karen can probably speak to that better. She's, she's actually a landscape architect, or Betsy, who's been in the business as well.
But in long and far, they let it be known that sometimes it's something like the land. You're going to make sure that you have to do X, Y, and Z, and all these requirements that count. Something so simple, it's giving a lot to your child, it's going to cost this amount of money. You don't think that that's absurd? I think you're, you're focused on this, this historic replanting for, for one of the goals that's within the master plan, but it's not. There's three hundred other goals that are within the master plan, which include the growth of Francis Town, which includes people being able to do reasonable things like give a lot to their child. I think you guys are, are asking for some really unrealistic goals. And you're costing, you know, our client a ton of money to do something so, so very simple. I think we've made some reasonable attempts. And I think you're just doing what you want to see, which is not necessarily what the town wants to see. And you've got some opposition from people that don't want to announce who your names are, but the people that did want to announce their names with their own support. I think that you need to step back and realize that what you've done is a very reasonable attempt to satisfy needs.
Anybody else?
Right, where do we go from here? I think we need to poll. So it looks like if, if the conditions are dialed back to fifty feet.
Yeah, but then the applicant's saying no. Okay.
He didn't say that. He said, we'd like to do a forest management plan, which will be plantings, which will take time to mature. And we're not going to get a, a plan that comes in. We're just going to make the note that we're going to have somebody that's adequate and professional come in and do the job.
Okay, can I ask you?
Buffer would ensure that the trees that were planted in those areas would actually mature or come to maturity.
What size, what sized trees were you proposing for the three per lot?
There was no specification to that, but we can do nursery stock trees because three trees on a lot that are nursery stock are a, a small, small value. It might cost somebody seven hundred bucks or something like that to get those and trust whatever costs to plant them. And as far as, you know, somebody going to house, they would probably want to have some landscaping, so that it's a small price. But to ask for something so significant that you're there for is unreasonable. I think to ask for a buffer, which is not required, and to ask for the buffer to be planted, which is not required, and for us to meet you even so partably to that degree should be accepted. Because what you are asking for is totally unreasonable.
Chair, what do you think about that?
I don't agree. I think that in order to meet the, the requirements of our, our zoning and our subdivision property requirements in order to protect the historic character of the neighborhood, in order to respect the value and bill of the buildings and property in the neighborhood, I think that what we're proposing at fifty feet is more than reasonable. We're asking for visual protection for the properties that are about to be developed, which we would have had, had you come in for a subdivision application at the time before you cleared the land.
Well.
Okay, I want to say this. I mean, I, I, we, we are definitely really getting on up on this. And I, I still think as a board, we have more room to compromise on this, to be honest. I think, we, we think of what the thing, it's a visual thing. It's, and I, I think we also have to think that not everybody thinks alike in our town. That one of the factors, if you impose such steep requirements that are very expensive, it increases the cost of housing, it makes it less affordable for people. There's competing considerations. And if, if you're trying to protect a tree-lined lane, that's one thing. But I think honestly, he's right. You don't need fifty feet to do that. And this is not high-value conservation land. And so it's, are we, and are, is it, are we on solid ground? Not just what you may personally want. Are you really on solid ground? That that's reasonable under our, our master plan and our zoning regulations? It may not be. You know, it seems like you could protect the view with a lot less. And even, I don't know about forestry management plans. If it takes some time, it takes some time. But I think they're probably allowed to consider cost. And, and cost, cost does play a role in what people can build and how they can use their property. And, and, and so I think we can put too fine a point on it. There, there can be those things we, we'd really love to see. But are we going to require it as a condition of this for subdivision? Which we, people in Francis Town may consider to be a huge subdivision, but it's a small subdivision, honestly. And the zoning regulations allow for much more. So I, I, I bet, you know, I urge people to be reasonable. And, and, and if we have conditions, make ones that, that can work. That's how I feel about it.
As a compromise, one idea might be to say, okay, you need to have vegetative buffer. However, it need not exceed X amount, for example, two thousand dollars.
Well, maybe, but I think it's, it's would have to be defined in, in, you know, in, in specific terms. And that's what we're trying to struggle with. So that's more of a rhetorical point, I think. But. So the question is, I guess, is to our board, are we willing to, to move forward to, to accept less? Or people don't want to accept less and, 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 and see where we really are with this?
Yeah. Exactly. That's what I'm trying to do. So, I mean. We need to. We definitely need to move this forward. We need to find a compromise. And vote, or. Or get an extension. So, and I would love to find a compromise that works, everybody.
I think we do in our problem, which would be, you know, supports re-planting. And to give you some kind of a buffer, whatever it be, we haven't decided that point, but you know, what's the requirement? And, you know, you're looking at this being prohibitive to the county, but, you know, person that's being violated most is the person that owns the property that's looking.
I'm sorry, Doug. I can't hear you. I can't either.
I said, the person that's getting violated the most out of this is the person that owns the property that wants to do something next for his children as far as, you know, a, a real requirement. There's, there's nothing on the, on the, on the regulations that says that he has to do this. He has the right to cut it. You guys want to see it planted back. We're being very reasonable in saying that we believe that, you know, nursery plantings to the degree of, you know, from a, a forestry plan within a certain distance of the, the stone wall would be appropriate. But anything other is, is acceptable. And that's pretty much where we are.
And I, I actually disagree that there's nothing in our rules and regulations that say that we have to have a buffer. The, and, and, or we wouldn't have been talking about it since day one. Our rules and regulations require us to decide what is necessary in order to protect the rural character, the historic significance, all that. And we have determined as a board that a, that a visual, a sufficient visual, visual buffer will be one way that we can, can create those protections required for us to approve this, this subdivision. So to say that that's not specific in our ordinance, I disagree with.
And I mean, at this point, Sarah, I mean, where, where is everybody else on the board?
Well, I, I tend to think that, you know, this is really hard to, to make a fair decision or to come to a fair decision with significant concerns. And one of the significant concerns, you know, is part of our subdivision requirements, which is A four in section five, that is preservation of existing features. It is everywhere in our master plan, and it is a guide for us, and it matters. So the way for me personally to kind of come to terms with the fact that it's no longer a wooded area, it is not a pasture that's bucolic and countryside, it is a subdivision. And the way to come to terms with that is to really create a very, very generous, abundant buffer. That's how I can, can come to terms with making a fair decision about this that would satisfy the applicant and satisfy the town.
Betsy.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think we need some, like I said, fifty feet, something. Something that.
A zoning ordinance, which tells you what you can and can't do. And you go to that, and it says, you can do these three lots. And we say, yeah, we believe that you can do that, but we'd like to see some things. And you're asking for things that aren't required. What you're asking for is things from an open-ended book. So what.
This is what conditions, I mean, conditions, you know, this is what we're talking about now. And, and there has to be, there, there's been, you know, honestly. If, if the lot hadn't been cleared and, and.
Raided.
Stumped and stripped, we wouldn't, we, and you came to us with this plan. I'm pretty sure, and I don't know this, but for sure, but I'm, I'm guessing that we would want to see you maintain the buffer along the road. From just a visual buffer. And that's where we're trying to get to. So the fact that we, we don't have that possibility now, we're trying to, you know, appease both our responsibility to, to just, you know, maintain the harmonious development of the neighborhood along with the, the zoning, which allows, you know, the subdivision. So there's got to be a way to, to compromise here. And I'm hearing from the board some, you know, changes to the draft conditions that, that would be, you know, compromised. But I also don't think there's going to be an approval without it. So this is where we're at. And I didn't do the, for the, you know, I don't want to walk away from this meeting.
Can you repeat, Karen?
Yes.
Okay, so then when we go back, we go back to the original plan where there was a few mature trees along the, is that, is that out of the running here at this point? I guess I'm just trying to look for, if, if the sap, if the, if the forestry plan that has the saplings that is going to take a while to grow is not, is not something that you guys are willing to consider, then are we not able to go back to this original proposal where we talked about having some mature trees? Or more mature trees put, put in on along the roads, you know, along road front as we proposed tonight? Is that not a consideration?
Just, I, I think the opinion, and please jump in, rest of the board, was that the three trees, and it sounds like they're pretty small, if you're talking about a hundred dollars.
No, 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 that was not what we were, no, for those, that's not the case. Nursery installed, if you can quote. Nursery stock, excuse me. That's the correct terminology for this.
Nursery stock, so two-inch caliper, what are we talking?
What is it? I, I guess I'm not.
That's, that's typical. That's typical for nursery stuff, yeah.
Yeah. So two-inch caliber trees, and I don't know what that original proposal, are you, so please say it again. I'm sorry.
I'm saying what we came in with this evening in terms of putting a few trees in front of each of the, a lot. More mature trees that are already a visual buffer.
The three, the three trees.
Off the table.
I would say that.
Or is that a meeting place? You know what I mean? Is that a potential meeting place there for us? Because it does offer that visual buffer that you are looking for.
I think we're looking for additional plantings, and they could be small. If we had the three, this is my opinion, and please, other people can weigh in here. But if you maintain the three larger two-inch caliper trees plus some additional native plantings that included, you know, whips and, and, you know, some native shrub. That might do it. That might do it for people. But I'm not speaking for them. I'm speaking for myself.
But, but, but we're not talking about fifty feet of it, right? We're, we're talking about a road frontage coverage. That's what I'm, that in, in reference to what we proposed tonight.
Yeah, and, and like.
Here between what we proposed and then adding, you know, you don't mean, it, it seems to me we can accomplish a visual buffer with much less than fifty feet if there, even if it's a tall tree and a small bush and a tall tree and a small bush, just, you know, for the sake of argument here.
Yeah.
I'm suggesting that that is likely a very adequate buffer in terms of seeing houses from the road. And we don't need to, so that eliminates our excessive expense to continue to move back in, in back fifty, hundred, however many feet. That's, that's a reason, that, that's where we can meet here. And this can be, this discussion can be done. You know what I mean? That, that seems very reasonable. We can work with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the hundred feet from the center line of the road, you're really just talking about, you know, originally, you're just talking about maybe, it, it's not a hundred feet of planting. But if we went to a zone from the stone wall.
Right.
To, you know, you know, even when, you know, you need enough space, so it's not like a solid planting of fifty feet every single square foot covered. It's just that zone that would be planted in a naturalistic way.
But it kind of feels like we're at that ten-foot buffer.
And I don't think ten feet is going to be enough. I don't know. What do other people think?
It needs to create a visual buffer. And, and eat three large trees and fifty-one inch saplings is not going to create a visual buffer. And that's what I think we're concerned about.
But we're never going to get to a visual, an immediate visual buffer. Like, that's just not going to happen in, like, tomorrow. We, we need to allow.
I understand that, but what Betsy described would create a visual buffer within a few years.
That's what I was saying.
Okay, so the question is, what do we actually need? I mean, I, I don't honestly know. Okay, so the question is, what do we actually need? I mean, I I don't honestly know the answer to that. But if it's less than fifty feet and it's planting, you know, uh, a certain number of trees and. Intermediate shrubs and all that, what do we really need to create a visual buffer that would be reasonable, not? You know, I I mean, that's, that seems to me what the issue is. Asking for a lot more than that, uh, we don't need to.
I think that a visual buffer is not going to be able to be attained with two thousand dollars. It isn't.
I didn't say that, I'm, that's not my.
No, their attorney said two thousand dollar cap.
But that's not what Melissa's suggesting.
No.
I don't think she's talking about two thousand dollars anymore.
That I think that. When you're talking about three larger trees, two inches in diameter as I'm. Okay, and then you have, if you have smaller plantings, which are bushes, not trees, I'm not talking about saplings, I'm talking about bushes. Shrubs, whatever they are, then that is an adequate road, you know, buffer, right? Uh, I mean, I I'm I'm looking at, I'm talking about something totally different than we've discussed, and I didn't put a two thousand dollar. You know, budget on it, though I think it could be accomplished from that. It it seems that that would be a very reasonable.
No.
No? Three trees and double bushes?
And just to clarify, I was, I was saying that whatever the buffer requirement is, it'd also be. You know, limited to a certain dollar amount, but it's not just like you have to plant so many trees or. Have the buffer be so big regardless of cost. I think it should be like, you know, you want to see a buffer of X, Y, and Z, provided however. That, you know, um applicant need not spend more than X amount to meet that condition.
I'm really, I'm I'm struggling with not having enough information or knowledge. To understand what a certain dollar amount will provide. Um, and I don't know how I'm going to get around that. And and feel comfortable with that right now with what we don't have.
Maybe these the townspeople that were in a in opposition would like to put a fund together to do some plantings instead of doing some opposition through.
Okay, that, you know, that's just not helpful here. Let's let's be, we're we're, I think we're trying to find a compromise here. I don't, I I don't think it's.
There's something that is required, there's nothing that's going to be an immediate buffer, anything that's going to be an immediate buffer would be totally cost prohibitive. I think that what we said is very realistic, but giving a buffer with so many feet, we put some plantings in there. Uh as far as, you know, some uh a farm transplant, smaller tree plants that will take over time. And I'll get back to the uh the way that it was, but I mean, there's no requirement for restrictive buffer to that degree of the plant. That's his property, he has the right to clear it, we told him, tell him to tell him, he shouldn't look for him to clear it. And now we come in for a subdivision, they say, no, 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 the tree is bad, because we want to see him back, but no one cared about it when he was clearing it. So, I mean, it's his right to do this. If you guys want to do something realistic and work with us to the degree that's something that's feasible. I think to give you a buffer, where a buffer is not required, it's to give you, offer plantings. Like we've done something that's actually, you know, monoprop should do these lots to these kids, you don't understand how much we've actually had to spend to just try to get these lots already. Uh, I I think that, you know, in the spirit of the ordinance, um, the best thing to do. Would be to to work with us to the degree that we're offering something that we feel is is, you know, adequate for both parties.
What specifically, though, are you offering?
We'd offer a certain strip within the stone wall. I don't think it's going to be a hundred-foot buffer. I think that, you know, something more like twenty-five feet within, from twenty-five feet from the stone wall. If we came in with some small, um, you know, farm plantings that would probably take ten years to get some kind of maturity, but you have a buffer. We're giving you a buffer, we're giving you something that, you know, ownership or easement over portion of the land, the right to control or look at this. We're giving you the right to 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 characterize this area on this land property. So from that standpoint, I think of us offering you a twenty-five-foot buffer with, you know, some small plants which would preserve the character of somebody driving down the road. You know, I mean, how much rights do you have on a guy's property, where you're going to see it, what direction would you? You know, the corridor, Stevens Road, twenty-five feet this round there, planting some, you know, some some very small trees that have taken over that are dated to the area. It's very, very reasonable.
I think you could do a buffer for twenty-five feet, but I'd also want to see some bigger material in there.
Well, so leave the three trees in front of each house on the table.
In order to create a an effective buffer with only twenty-five feet, you're going to have to do a density of planting that I think is not natural. I think we're better off to have it be deeper and less um.
But the question is, like, this this buffer zone that needs to be protected, so where are we?
Well, we've got it to twenty-five feet. So, I mean, I mean, I I mean, honestly. It it seems like we try, should try to work with twenty-five feet and see if we can make that work. I mean, you can want more, you can want a a bigger strip, but we're talking visually.
This isn't a question of what we want, Brad, it's what we think is necessary in order to preserve the value of the neighborhood, protect the environment, create the view sheds. And.
I I can tell you that it's it's, I, you you may be solidly convinced, but it seems like. With twenty-five feet with the proper planning, could probably do all of those things fairly well. I mean, it's, this is not high-value conservation land. We're not talking about a huge threat here in this strip. We we're primarily talking about uh preserving the rural character and the view of the neighborhood. And we also have to have something that withstands scrutiny. They have certain rights to use their land. And and so we can, you know. Well, that's true, but we're trying to reach a point here um and 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 reach some meaningful compromise. And it seems like, what about twenty-five feet? Can that, if they agree to plant a certain amount of larger trees and smaller, can we work with that? I mean, if that, well, that, it may take some time, but I I I think anything's going to take some time. And but trees grow and will we ultimately, you know, get, you know, pretty close to what people want? And preserve, give them the right to make, you know, the use of their their land. And not make it so prohibitively intensive that, you know, that that is an issue, honestly, it should be, honestly, and so. Uh, I I don't know why we can't do that. I mean, um, um, you know, and there was, it wasn't unanimous. I mean, uh, I was at those hearings, there are people with different points of view, even in the neighborhood. So I I think we, I think we ought to be more realistic, honestly, and try to resolve this. What are you going to have, Kedon?
Right.
We're going to go anywhere with this, I think that uh what we've thrown out there is is our reasonable approach.
Okay. Twenty-five feet. Keeping the three larger trees, adding smaller material, combination of. Small trees, small entrubs, native. Designed or planned by a professional.
I don't think designed by, I think it can offer what you have.
Yeah, I think we need to see something by a professional.
Yeah, uh, qualified professional.
Yep.
Qualified professional?
Qualified professional, we need to see it, you know, a a planting plan.
But what else are we?
A real planting plan that has a list of plants and the and and where they go.
And the size of the plants and where they go.
Yeah.
And I would also, and also, um, I think it has to be a plan that will create a buffer within X number of years. I mean, that's. That's our whole idea. It sounds to me like what what you guys are proposing. Will not create a visual buffer. Anytime soon.
No. But. I have to ask, like. To 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 create an immediate buffer would be un- unreasonable.
But within anytime soon is not. I mean, trees grow pretty fast, birches grow really fast, white pine grows really fast, blueberries grow pretty fast. There's a lot of natural stuff that was probably right there on that land gone. They could. Grow up in five years.
Yeah.
Create a visual buffer.
So let's see, what what's your opinion?
I, I think there are lots of native plants that grow quite quickly, dogwoods.
Yeah.
That type of thing, they're going to grow up quick.
I think that instead of picking these trees, I think that the thing to do would be like we had proposed. A forestry replanting plan, um, that the, um, that's our qualified professional, he would be the one that actually chose. The plantings native to the area as far as what would doubt the best to be there, offering our twenty-five feet. You know, every time you get to some territory, they say, no, like, this seems acceptable, then everybody pops and says, let's do a landscape plan, I was doing some fruit trees, let's grow some of this. I think we've got the point where this is what we're offered.
Okay, so does, did you mention to keep the larger trees as well?
I did, as far as.
But can I just say one thing? A forestry replanting plan is not a visual buffer, it is a stabilizing buffer. A forestry replanting plan is to, in order to keep erosion from happening, which I would be okay with on the back of the lots, but. Uh, it does, it is not going to, in anytime soon, create. A forest that that does anything to protect the neighborhood from the development.
Can't hear you.
I think that was our offers, are there other items you want to discuss tonight?
We need to move on, I mean, I I honestly, I I think. You know, it's, I think we ought to accept this and give them a chance here and then move on to the other things we need to talk about. I mean, we could, you can get hung up on this, but you may end up with none of it and more problems, honestly, so. Uh, you know, it's, uh, you know, any buffer, I assume would take some time to grow. And um if they, if if they pick plants that are native to the area and designated by a forester that are suitable. Uh, maybe I'm missing something, but um, you know, it's, um, you know. We're we're talking about a view. This, I don't think either way will have a substantial. Something larger will have a substantially different uh impact on the value of the houses in the neighborhood, which I think is pretty remote. Or um.
Don't agree.
Well, maybe, but um, but in any event, I think, I think it is a legitimate thing to say cost matters. Affordability of housing matters, that's something that's important. Um, and so to say to impose uh very expensive or too expensive requirements doesn't achieve anything. Honestly, um, so I think, uh, I think we ought to, you know, I would accept that it's not everything I would personally want. But and then move on and see if we can resolve the rest of this. We're not dealing with a fifty-house subdivision. I mean, um, it's, the world will not come to an end. Um, and so I think we we just have to, you know. Move on, that's what I would.
Yeah, I think it's, um, I I don't agree with that entirely. I think it is incredibly important to maintain the character. For the value of the properties that are there.
But that may be, but that's also an argument that you use uh unhappily in discrimination, which often was used. And so we have a different people of different incomes that need housing in France. And um I think I wouldn't rely too heavily on that, honestly.
I think that a twenty-five-foot buffer, if done right, could be fine. It's it's really just the. Uh, you know, what what's involved in the planting, and I'd like, I think we would like to see the plan. So if.
And maybe say.
Part of the compromise, then.
Maybe a guidance of twenty-five to fifty feet buffer, depending on what the professional says. Is appropriate to provide an adequate buffer, and then. Then we determine what the adequate buffer is.
So are we talking about a condition that is to be approved by the board? I mean, with the plan?
Well, it has to be, right, it would have to be a condition of approval.
And also then the board would get to weigh on, it's whether that, whatever they presented was met met that condition.
Yeah, we would have to have a.
We have to have a compliance hearing.
Compliance hearing.
I think.
The only way to 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 do that.
I think that our our four-three replanting twenty-five feet in the stone wall and offering the trees in the front yard. I think that to to take someone's opinion of what they'd like to see on the road versus a forester that's uh has a background of what's native and belongs there. I think that we're we're still on the same page. I think that we we want to do here is what we offered is is what we're giving up.
I think between myself and and Betsy, we could, we could review the plan in a professional capacity.
Yeah, there's no plan, the forester going out there figuring out what he deemed to be native to the area.
Yeah.
You got twenty-five-foot strip, and the fact that you have a a buffer. A dedicated buffer that you can control, that's the control that this plant will take off and they'll succeed.
Right, I mean, I I would trust that a forester would know what to put in there, we just want to see what the plan is.
There is no plan, it's a forester going out there and planting.
Oh, well, then. How do we, how do we, like, that doesn't.
You have to go over that area.
Why, why can't there be a a plan? I don't understand, like.
That's all the foresters do, they just go out there, you sort of, you know, plant the areas, that's what they do, they come in after areas are cut, they're cutting up, they decide what species is on there. They'll replant that area, that corridor.
So.
But I, I was going to say, I would think there would have to be a plan that would be submitted to the planning board for approval. You're not thinking that?
No.
No?
No.
It's not a requirement.
That's not enough, that's not enough. We need.
We're talking about trying to work this out, and so if if there's a forester that walks through the area and and has an idea, this is. Generally what should go here, here, and here, you can't put together some kind of plan.
I know, why, why couldn't you just have, you know?
Do you want to get this done or not? I mean, the whole thing is, I mean, how is that incredibly hard to do that? I mean, so you have a forester who knows the area, he knows the habitat, he knows what's likely to grow, and he's saying, this is what I would recommend. And and you can, that that I think, if it can be put in some kind of a plan, I don't know what form it has to take. And so, uh, you know, we have a sense of of what he's talking about, and.
Right.
I think, I mean, I I'm not a forester, I know Betsy has a lot of foresters in her family. Your list, uh, we have a landscape architect, but they just want some assurance that.
I think we're ready to move on.
All right.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, all right.
So what they're offering is a forester is going to do the work, but we're not going to see the plan?
That's apparently yes.
So want to be clear?
We're going to hold on to the next one, fighting for any other pop up and stuff.
All right, okay. All right.
Okay, uh, so. I think the. The other item was whether it's a no-cut zone, this planting buffer, if it's approved. the other item was whether it's a no-cut zone, this planting buffer, if it's approved.
And if we're going to only do a 25-foot planting buffer, we have a much larger no-cut zone because that will add additional protections. I think none, I'm not happy with a 25-foot buffer. But if there was an additional, I mean, maybe it's 100-foot cut, no-cut zone, maybe it's a 50-foot no-cut zone. But that, and that is no cost to the applicant at all. Just let the forest happen beyond what they're planting. So I would suggest that we make that as, as large as possible, as large as reasonable to at least help create what, what we're looking for, which is this desired buffer.
All right, so. What's, what, what are we talking about? 50-foot no-cut zone?
So what, what is, a no-cut zone literally means that? You can't do any forestry, can't do anything?
Can't, you can't, like, do all this, plant it, and then when the property is conveyed to their, their kids as they have stated, and they can't go in and cut everything down.
Okay, I don't see why.
25-foot buffer in the planting.
I don't know why it would have to be any broader than the 20, whatever we decide the buffer should be. I mean, I'm not.
More of a natural vegetative buffer grow, no cost to the applicant.
Okay, I guess I don't agree with that. I don't see that adds that much, honestly.
So what do you, what don't you agree with, Brad? The width?
Limited to what the barrier is. I mean, the zone is, that's.
Okay.
That's how I feel. I don't, I don't see it adding on that much. Or that it really moves us along or improves what we want.
What about any existing trees that are outside the 25 feet? I don't know if there are any, but.
There's plenty of different trees. As a matter of fact, 50% of the basil was likely cut by the, the logger along Stevens Road. So there's already a good amount of trees there. We're offering more. We're offering 25-foot strip, which is a replanting. So I think that we did was more than reasonable. And I think that we told you that was our offer. We wanted to move on from that. So, I mean, that's where we're at.
All right. So we'd like to see that that preserved in some way, that effort of the buffer.
That's what a buffer is.
Well, we would like to put stipulation on it that it can't be cut down.
Well, that's what it would be.
Okay, great. Perfect.
We would have to actually have our driveway, where we're proposing them, to go through.
May I ask for Betsy's opinion on whether an additional no-cut area would be beneficial?
It's off the table for most.
I, I actually think it might be kind of messy looking as it grows up.
All right.
All right, um. The last item, there's a couple other items I have here. The sedimentation road control plan, those will be part of the AOT. So I think that's covered. Yes?
Does the AOT look at everything, slopes in excess of 15%?
I don't.
They don't generalize the slopes. They characterize the drainage pattern to look to see what they're treated.
But in terms of slopes, I mean, a typical roadside slope, four to one, is 25%. So from a stabilization period, we're very familiar with how to deal with it.
And I mean. I understand that, but our regulations require stabilization of slopes, disturbed slopes from 15 to 25%. And I'm not clear whether the AOT will address those, that 15 to 25% slope.
The only stabilization of any disturbed area here regardless of what slope is. So it could be zero percent, 100%.
Okay, all disturbed areas.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the building envelope, that was the last, there are two other items. A building envelope, which means where exactly the structures are placed on the site. And that was one item. And the no additional subdividing of Lot 318. Those two items. The whole, the whole idea behind the building envelope is to, is to sort of stagger the buildings so they don't look so cookie cutter placed along the road. I don't know, and I understand that moving them back should be more of a problem as far as the, the slopes go. So I, I think we need to talk about this one.
I think that for offering into that for further placement is a little absurd. We have a building setbacks that are on there that are in accordance to the zoning regulations.
Yeah.
You'd like to leave it up to the, the potential landowner to then decide where he can put his home. So I think that building boxes are the question. And I think that to restrict a 27-acre parcel to no further subdivision is a little ridiculous too. So I think that both of those are off the table.
I thought that you said it couldn't be subdivided more in the last, the last couple of meetings.
It can't with the configuration we have.
Okay.
To know that somebody else might want to do something later on with future, with a couple lots or whatever, we don't know. It's just the restriction that's not necessary.
Okay. Let's go to the building envelope. I know Betsy had this as one of the.
I'm voting against it.
Wait, who, who's, who's speaking?
Lisa.
Voting against what?
No, I was talking about something else.
Okay, okay. Um.
No, this is really.
Betsy, were you talking, I think you mentioned the building envelope as, as part of Conservation Commission comments?
Yes. You know, sometimes when we look at building envelopes, we put them on a piece of property from the Conservation Commission as a recommendation. It's, it's often when there's wetlands or some other, you know, environmental concern, and we ask for a smaller designated building envelope that puts them as far away from that sensitive area as possible. We've done that many times. On this particular one, I think some of, it may not be so much that as the aesthetic concerns may be more important. So it's not, you know, I don't think we want to see the suburban, you know.
I can't get this thing to work.
But the houses that are all in a row, you know, like evenly spaced, that we just to try and stay away from that, you could sort of stagger them. If you look at the lots, I think it's sort of, you can see.
The buffer, when you're not supposed to then be able to see the house and then to talk about where they'll be on the lots, it's already a 100-plus buffer from the west.
Doug.
With the AOT, it's gonna be taken care of as far as green. So I think, I think those are absurd requests.
Yeah, I, I actually think it's, I, I, I look at it from a different perspective. And, you know, it's, first of all, if we're proposing 25 feet and not 100 feet, and we're proposing something that is going to be a combination and take several years to develop, there is a visual component that's, we're probably gonna deal with for decades. And unless you're planting all evergreens, there is going to be seasonal visibility. And again, it's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood that, you know, having four stacked houses is very unappealing. And again, from a, from a, you know, a character standpoint, is a departure.
I think you're taking away the liberties and freedom of somebody deciding where they want to put their house.
I believe if I'm not mistaken, the planning board has a prerogative and to designate the building envelope if they choose, if they think that, you know, it's discretionary and if they think that that makes a difference.
I think to ask for the buffer and to ask for staggering the houses is inappropriate.
I'm sorry, where in the subdivision regulation does it say that there's this discretion as to the building envelope?
I have to look it up.
I think these, these are not huge pockets. Like, we're not talking about some giant place where someone's gonna be all over the place putting their lot. Basically, they're gonna have a gravity septic system. Their house is gonna go there. They're not gonna build down on the slopes. This is where development's happening on these lots.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, let me add this, that if, 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 I know you're, you know, you're opposed, you know, I understand that your client is opposed to, because, you know, your argument, they ought to be able to put where they want to, what, or there, is it possible? I mean, is it within the, the, the building, you know, two acres, is it possible to stagger them?
No, not really, because I mean, if you want me to put one house downhill, that means they put in, you're asking me to put in a hump system for septic for that one lot because you want to see that one downhill, and you want to see the next one uphill. These are all gonna be built in the front with gravity systems down the back.
I would not like to see the septic and the house line switched from one position to the other. I would not, that would not be something I'd be willing to see.
Things that are building envelopes are appropriate because.
I mean, there are building envelopes here.
Right, exactly.
So, yeah, I guess, I mean, personally, you know, I kind of like them not all aligned either, but if it's possible, but if it's, is it possible? Or is it possible in a way that's gonna make a significant amount of difference? That's what I would like to know. If it is, I don't know why it couldn't be accomplished if it's not really gonna make all that much difference because you're constrained by the, you know, topography or where the septic is, that's.
You're exactly right. I mean, we'd be popping all over.
Not able to.
There's, I think there is some wiggle room there, like, you know, you could, you could fool around with these placements. I.
Right.
You know, I wouldn't want, like, Lot 4 to be, I don't know, unless you flip the septic in the house, that would not make sense at all, but.
In mind, we propose help that put on here are, are conceptual, large homes. There's nothing exact locations. That's gonna be the result of a septic design. We're not really proposing a four cookie cutter lots here. We're still gonna do something that would work. And, you know, we just do the simplest thing. We place the houses. This is where houses could go. This is where wet could go.
Right.
When you know the septic is on, that's when they make sure where they would like their house, how they would like the flooring painted. And it's all based upon where the, the septic's gonna go. So take that, you know, with the grain of salt as far as those house locations, but the topography is gonna depend on these, these homes.
Why, can I ask you why the septic is shown so far down the lot on, on, on one?
Right.
Why is that septic shown so far?
We, we, we do test this and we want to be on each one of the lots as part of the subdivision process. Then when it comes time for the homeowner, if he doesn't choose to use that location, we can do a septic test fit and we can be wherever he wants to have it set. But this is just for the purposes of subdivision, to prove these lots are adequate.
Yeah, to me, that, that lot is the one that's most amenable to, I mean, most suggestible to having the, the building be set back farther. It's got, it's deeper. Wetland setback. It's, you've already perked the land back further. I think you could go another 50 feet back and you wouldn't have cookie cutter looking houses all around the road in the beginning of that. If you push that, if we had a building envelope in that lot that was closer to, very close to the tree line, you've got much more of a, and I, and, and I agree with, with whoever, just, I think it was Jerry that just said that, or maybe Karen, that the aesthetics of the neighborhood would be improved if we aren't looking at forefront of the house that are exactly 50 feet from the road. That's gonna aesthetically be very unappealing.
If I had staggered the placement of these houses so we didn't have the conversation, we wouldn't have brought it up. It was just something simple to do from a concept standpoint. Honestly, when somebody goes out there, they're gonna figure out what they want their home. You know, and who's gonna want to have that cookie cutter representation? But it should be, you know, where the adequate spot is for that particular home location. And we, we didn't give the call in driveway. We simply protect where the driveway can go at least. And, you know, at that point, now we just need to figure out where the septic's gonna go and where they want to have their house.
So I, I'm asking you, what, what argument is there against us showing building envelopes in this plan? I just don't understand what your pushback is. Just the fact that you have to re, redo the, I mean, where? Why? It, it's no difference to you.
Wondering what.
As far as the, the plan goes, like, why are you arguing against this? I'm just curious. Like, I don't want to hear what, I just want to know where you're coming from.
I think it's something that's getting whoever's getting along to then decide where they place their home. So what kind of home?
Right.
Can I, can I interrupt for a second? Because I just found in our subdivision regulation, section five. It's section five, A, five, and it's lot, under lots, and it's section J. And I can perhaps read it to you so you don't have to dig it out, but essentially, for reasons specific to lot characteristics or to the characteristics of roads fronting on the property, whether or not the road, whether or not the road provides frontage for land use purposes or for the protection of view sheds, or to the nature of the information provided by the subdivider, the planning board may designate a building envelope in which development must take place.
Yeah, if I may, that's, that's what is shown on that. That's, it's because of that is why we put the building envelopes on the plan.
You didn't put building envelopes. That's buildable acreage. That's different than building envelopes.
If you look at them one by one, if you look at 318-4, there's really nowhere else you could configure the well, the house, and the septic and be within the envelope.
Yeah, that's right. So maybe not all of them change.
Right.
Not all of the lots need to have a different, different envelope than what you're showing.
I think it just takes one or two to be relationally different than others.
But I mean, I'm saying it's a practical matter. If you look at them, you know, again, 318-3, you could maybe move the house. You know, what is that? That's a two-foot contoured interval. You can maybe move the house two feet?
No.
Why, but why, but can you just, I'm just curious.
Just trying to supply the freedom for them to be able to place the home that they want to place on that lot. And I think that, you know, per the zoning ordinance, we've met the requirements. I don't think we're going to have cookie cutter houses here. We just showed something that was like generic.
You don't, but you don't know, you know, you, you don't know what you're gonna have on there.
Well, I know.
All, we can all just guess what's gonna happen there and hope whatever we want to be, to be. But if we, if we have a reason for wanting to designate a couple of these lots to show where the building envelope is, I don't understand what the argument is against that. Names a difference to the plan, then, you know, if we, we, you know, we are, as we have said time and time again, our charge is to, you know, approve the most harmonious plan we can for this neighborhood. And I feel like we've thought about this a lot in the context of the neighborhood, and this seems to be an important issue. And I don't understand why we can't discuss building envelopes for a couple of these lots and not every single one. Obviously, Lot 4 isn't really, you don't even have any choices there.
Yeah.
Free, you can wiggle that around a little bit. I think we can, I, I don't know why this isn't something we can come to terms with.
So you're talking about revising the setbacks, correct?
No, we're talking about designating within the same buildable area that you are showing where the footprint of the. where the footprint of the building can be.
Well, hang on.
Well, that's the entire area of the setback is where the building can be.
Yeah.
To have some ability to, to change.
Only if we, but it won't be if we designate a building envelope. This is what we're saying. There are points, there are times when we can actually designate the building, yes, Betsy, go.
Wait, we can't hear you.
Under section J, I have to turn my head to read it. It says that the building area may be smaller than the buildable acreage, the designated building, so we, we want to, we want to designate a specific area that's build, for the buildable acreage. The buildable acreage, designated building lot, building area.
Right.
That provides the setback lines, because it's telling you where you don't get those.
No, it's not revising the setback lines, I don't think you're understanding. Leaving the same setbacks, leaving the same buildable area, which we need to, to even get to, you know, pass the zoning. So it's within the buildable area, but it is showing a, a building envelope wherein that building must stay in, within the buildable area, so it could be further from the setback, but it's not gonna be different from the setbacks.
So, the question is, why can't you tweak your plan?
Yeah, why, what's the argument against it?
You want this to go through, and, you know, you can dig your heels in, and I guess that's your right, but is there a way to make this work? So, we can, you know, deal with the concerns we have to deal with, you have somewhat different concerns, so it seems like this is kind of a nuts and bolts problem. And you can argue about, you know, this and that, but is there a way of doing it? So, yeah, this, we can, you know, you can say we shouldn't have to do it, but we have the authority to make you do it, and we'd like to get beyond this point, so can you look at one or two of those lots and see if you can adjust it in a way of building envelope within it, so it won't look like Bed Bud Row, that's what they're talking about.
Right.
And just, just to be practical here, you know, for the nuts and bolts analysis, there's really only one where you have any kind of um leeway, which is three eighteen one. And I, you know, I would, as a practical matter, what you don't want to do is say the building has to be here, because once you start digging for foundation, you can hit a boulder or something, but you might have to shift that that house, so you want to have, you know, not a specific site for a building, you want to have an area, and the only one that, that has, you know, any kind of leeway there is, is three eighteen one, but three eighteen four, three eighteen three, three eighteen two, that's if you look at where you gotta put the well and the septic, you're that's it.
Okay, well, maybe, but I mean.
I actually.
You know, I, we're asking if there's a way to do it. I mean, if there's a way to do it, and you can get what you, you know, we can move forward with this.
Yeah.
One issue, that seems like, one that you could probably, with a little creativity, make it work.
Yeah.
That's kind of what we're looking for.
And, and, and I'm sure Meridian has done plenty of plans that have building envelopes, so I don't think you don't understand what I'm talking about. And I've, I've seen, you know, I've seen work done where, where this is very tightly controlled. And we're asking you to, to just consider this, because it is something that's important to the plan, I don't know why we can't get beyond this and just you know, have you really give it a, give it a go at, at you know, fulfilling this, this request?
So, I'm confused by your term as far as the building block, because my building setback lines, that I have on the plan, depicts anywhere they can build, so if you're saying you would like them to move the house further back, what you're asking me to do is really revise the setback line for a particular lot.
No, the setback lines will stay.
So what's the restriction on the plan as far as where somebody can build this thing, I guess I'm confused by this, because you left it for, for a building, I put a box on this plan and, and they're only allowed to build within this box?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
So the setbacks are jump at that point? The box.
Well, I mean, that's the concept, so you, if you want to consider it that way, but it really isn't. So, I mean, so what if, you know, so is there a way to do it? If you say there's no way to do it, okay, or you won't agree to do it, but if you want to, you know, this is a concern with you know, the planning board, and it's, it really is a concern uh in trying to protect the, kind of the, the look of the, the area, and it seems like with a little, you know, noodling it a bit, you may be able to accomplish that, and you could move it, move beyond, I guess if you, if you say no, absolutely can't, we'll just have to make what decision we make, but if you want to move beyond this point and and get your subdivision approved, maybe you can work that out.
I think, yeah, I think we get out of twenty-five foot to the uh setback of that lot to drop it back staggered. I don't want to know how much they want to push downward, because really, until they actually do some, some alteration with terrain and what have you, this lot might actually be necessary for drainage and what have you, when you go to do a permit to the state, so, anything I restrict on here, this might be ruining my building pocket anyway.
Yes.
So, what he just said concerns me. If alteration terrain permit creates, requires alterations that may change something here that we're looking at, that concerns me
Oh.
in general.
Improving the plan, yeah.
In regards to the drainage, if they want to see some kind of a spill or something to that degree in a certain area to remediate the drainage, that's something that we would have to worry about, where the, the house is going to be in relationship to that. And when we go off the alter to the terrain, we, we project where the houses are going to be.
Right, so we'll.
We move that one back.
We'll move it, we'll show you where it's gonna be, it's.
What do you want to see? I think they don't understand what you want to see for a building block. Is it from the front in a certain distance?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, they, they, I assume that their people are talk, talking about not having them all lined up in a row, or maybe not all at the same orientation, so maybe there's a way to do that, maybe you say that it's far too complicated to do that, I don't know, but if there is a way to do it, uh, it, then it won't, it, it seems like, I, I'm not I don't pretend any particular expertise on this, but if there's a way to do it and, and can solve that concern, maybe we can move forward. If you, if, um, if there's no way to do it, that's that, I guess, but um, that's, that's one of the things people care about, honestly, and that, that does have some authority in this regard, so, um, you know, it seems like it would be who to try to you know, tweak it, see if you can make that work, but maybe you can't, I don't know.
I think it's complicated at this point.
Yeah, sir, I, I think it's a practical matter, I mean, you need a, you need a two-acre um buildable area, you're at two-point-three, two-point-four, two-point-three, and three, so it's really only that three one where you have any kind of leeway, for three of them, as a practical matter, I just don't think that's, that's uh feasible.
We're all at that standpoint together, but I think if they're just asking me to revise this one, and I think from that standpoint, unless I took each one of the lots and understood where the house was gonna be, where the exact septic was gonna be, where everything, that, everything was gonna be, but I, I don't know what's going to be there, I mean, I, I don't know, I think it's too complicated to revise that setback.
I don't understand why it's so complicated. I, I really don't, like, you could draw a square on there like you did for the septic area. I mean, honestly, that's what it is.
Oh, that, so, two, the, as I understand it.
This is unbelievable conversation.
Yeah, yeah, as I understand it, the two-foot buildable area is like a threshold requirement. But the building envelope, it would be like, let's say there was a, a one-acre requirement, you'd figure out where to put the house, right? I mean, so, we have a two-acre building requirement, but within that the plant board can say, you have to put on a smaller piece of property, you have to have that two acres, but within that, you have to, so that's what we're dealing with here. And so, if you can't, if there's no way to do it within that, fine, I guess, but that's what we're talking about. I don't, no, it's, it's not like you have to come up with another two acres or anything like that, it's, you know, it's within that area.
It's not changing any of the setbacks or the two-acre areas that you already have on the plan. It is just showing you the boundaries of where the house can go within that area.
You know, the money moving stuff, um.
And staggering that, so that the, the aesthetics of the neighborhood are improved, so we're not looking at whatever Brad said, cookie cutter or could.
He said something better than that.
Yeah, way better.
Something about bedbugs.
I don't think you can do it, we really I'm gonna impose a, I'm gonna impose a place to put a house, let's say something happens, for whatever reason it doesn't work, and you want to put it somewhere else, then what, they can't?
That could happen any, like, you, it could happen where you're showing the house right now.
Right, so what, what happens when I go up and I can't build, because of ledge or something or whatever, then what happens? Then where do I go?
Like, what, 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 what's there?
Nothing restrictive enough that I can't put the home there, they don't want to laugh, they don't do whatever, something doesn't work.
Is there a ledge there? Is there anything to indicate we have ledge there?
Well, no, but.
No, okay, then, then we're done, then.
Yeah, I, I mean, I really don't understand why this is
I don't either.
a cult issue, because
Everything is difficult, everything is difficult.
Just preserving the character through staggering it, so they don't look stacked.
I don't know.
I think the whole placement should be up to the owner, and I, and I don't know how they're gonna do that. So I think I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, they, you've seen their house, so you have an idea of the kind of building that they do.
I don't think that we have any guarantee that they, the Shaddocks, are gonna build these houses. And there's nothing, we're not going on any kind of precedent. That, that's, that's a crazy argument, I'm not going there. Unless, you know, unless you have building plans, architectural, you know, elevations for us to look at, we're not talking about.
And deed restrictions, if they're only gonna be giving the land to their children.
So, so what we would like is for us to have a plan that does not look like the houses are all lined right up to change the character, which requires maybe one or two tweaks on this plan, and that is what we're asking, and I don't know why it matters to you, you're not building there, and or, like, why, why can't we get this?
Because I think we've.
It's not complicated.
Yeah, I, I, I. Ron was admitted.
Provision of the plan. Every time we come in, there's a different set of criteria, and it's not criteria from the subdivision regulation. It's new.
Building envelope for. It is, I just read it to you.
So, well, you know, I mean.
And I mentioned it.
Maybe that's a non-factor for you, but I think about that, I mean, you know, this, I mean, you're, I know, we're getting in the middle, middle of a you know, a push and a pull, and people get entrenched, but think about it, it's, it doesn't sound like it would be, maybe unless there's, you know, reasons with the nature of the lot that it's impossible, but if there's a way to do it and, and so it doesn't look like, you know, just a suburban tract, I guess that's what people worry about.
I guess I'd like to just, right, so I'm hearing that it's just something that the applicant does not want to agree to?
Well, but.
I don't, I don't, but that's, I don't get it.
Well, okay, well, that's up to you, I guess, is that where you are, you don't, you, because we've been going back and forth, would you at least try to see if you could come up with that, is, or no, you talk about it, or no, or you're just done? Maybe that's.
I'm sorry, what?
We'll do the best we can, I'll take my seat for, I'll revise the location of where I'm proposing a house.
Great.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, I think that was the last item.
What about the no further subdivision, did we already talk about that?
Well, as it stands, there can't be any further subdivisions on lot eighteen in this configuration.
So we could have that as a condition and it wouldn't be an issue?
It wouldn't ma, it doesn't matter, like, unless there's some new configuration of the lot that comes in.
Well, for instance.
And that's, that, am I correct in saying that, that?
I don't think so.
No, I don't either. I mean, that may be your assertion that it's not, no, not permissible in this current situation, but um, what if the applicant comes back in two years and wants to put a subdivision road in uh, and develop that back piece, there's no protections at all to, to and, and we're already looking at a, at a hyper-developed parcel of land here compared to the neighborhood and the level of development in our town.
They have no plans to develop, I think it's a restriction, because we're not looking to further develop, but I would want to impose a restriction that's not necessary in your property. I don't think that the DES or the right line would give you a permit to process that, so I don't see any hurdle there, nor do I see us building on these slopes in the back down behind uh the riding rink down below, so I, I, I just think that it's, it's not necessary.
Well, there's no, there couldn't be a subdivision without coming before the planning board.
Correct.
But either way, if, if, if you don't think it's um, it's feasible anyway, then why are you objecting to the restriction?
I put it on, because it don't need to come on.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's, yeah.
So, yeah, there, I don't know about that, I, if there's no likely possibility that's gonna happen, I, I guess
You want a better, you know.
Okay, you disagree, well, I, I, unless you, um, I mean, but is that a basis for uh throwing out the subdivision at this point, or, I guess, I, I don't.
I'm, I'm asking why we can't have this condition be put on.
Can this dollar?
I guess.
I didn't hear that.
Matt, is there anything else?
Nope.
That was the last one.
The last one.
On our list, yes. Well, except I still want to go back and discuss the four lots versus not four lots. As I said in previous, in previous hearings, I don't believe that three eighteen four is a sufficient um, I think that, that three eighteen three and three eighteen four is too intensive use of, of that piece of land, with the amount of wetland that's, that's encroaching in the back there, with the amount of slope that's on the side, um, you, you have in your building envelope, you have a house and a septic system, we, we know Francis Chan, in two minutes, someone's gonna want to build a barn or another outbuilding, or another shed, and you just don't, you don't really have that available, in my mind, and we are directed to um, uh, cons, to make sure that we foster development compatible with the carrying capacity of the land, and to me, those two lots, that area is two lots exceeds the carrying capacity of the land, given that you've got um uh, a lot of wetland on it, a lot of slope on the side of it, uh, and, and and in my mind, it's just, it is, it's too intensive use, so I said in the last hearing, and I'll say it again, I could support three lots along Stevens Road, but I can't support four lots.
No way, we don't, we need the health requirement, we make the state's requirements, exceed them both.
Meet the zoning.
And, and you're saying, because you speculate someone may want a barn in the future as a reason for not approving a lot, no, that's we're not doing it, we want the four lots.
I also believe that, that the um, all of the other stipulations that we've talked about as far as the uh, uh, character of the neighborhood, the um the concerns I have over the protections of the wetlands, what's already been done on the land, the stripping of the land, I just can't support this intensive use.
Meet the zoning.
I can support three lots.
We need the zoning.
I hear you. Letter of the, of the law versus spirit of the law, and I, I don't believe it meets, it may meet the, the other than the two-point, two-nine-nine-point-nine-nine, it may meant the strict letter of the law, but I don't believe, you've shown I don't believe in this plan that it is, that the carrying capacity of this land supports four lots along Stevens Road, in my opinion.
Well, it certainly does, and not only do it need the zoning, I exceed it, and I also exceed any state minimum requirements.
You exceeded the what? I'm sorry, what requirement?
Exceed any state minimum requirements in addition to the town requirements.
I, I, honestly, I think that's the nice proposition, I know. They, honestly, I do, there, um, I, I don't see that argument. I don't know how we can, um, I don't think we have much of a basis for telling them they have to have one less house. They have a, you know, they, they've come up with a workable plan and we had some, we have some, you know, questions about some conditions we want to place on it, but if those are met, I think they ought to be allowed to have four lots. It's not honestly, you know, it's, it's not a super hyper-intensive use of land, honestly. Only in Francis Town, I think, would people think that. And I think they meet the setbacks. I, I, I don't see that as an argument. I don't see, you know, sure, would I like to see one less house? Yes. But do I think we have a basis that would withstand scrutiny? No, I don't. I, I think we don't, honestly. I just don't see it. I mean, if there's certain impacts on the wetlands we think need to be addressed, we ought to address those, but I, I just don't see that as a good argument. Maybe someone else does, but absent some more specific basis for it, I, I wouldn't go for it.
Anyone else weigh in on that one? Okay, so. I just want to go through these conditions again and just see where we are. So the perm, DES permit, subdivision permit, AOT permits, the buffer, which was 25-foot buffer that would include the three trees per lot at two-inch caliper plus additional smaller native plantings designed or planned by a professional. The client was not agreed to providing the planning board with a plan. Is that correct or did? Yes?
We're gonna leave it up to the professional forester to make the decision of what plantings to go there.
Yeah, that's, that's okay, but we'd like to just see something on paper is what we're asking for.
Do they do plans? I don't know the forest for your plans.
Do, 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 I, I, I know you've seen a planting plan. Like that's what we're, we don't, we just want like 50 blueberries here or like a list and, and what's gonna be there? I think. By qualified professional.
And that is not subject to approval or?
Yes, that would be subject to approval.
Yeah, we want, we want to see what's gonna be there and how many and what the species are.
I, I think it would be a good idea to bring these proceedings to a conclusion and not.
I'm reading over the condition so the people, so we can see what we're talking about here.
I think a plan by a qualified professional for your viewing purposes, but not for subject of scrutiny or revisiting the species.
The board would have no approval, no.
I'm not okay with that.
I'm not okay with that.
I'm leaving it up to the qualified professional to decide what needs to go into that area.
Sure, so they, they, they'll, if they understand the purpose and the intent, then they should, they should be able to.
Yeah. They also know what's gonna grow there and.
But why, 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 if, if they're providing a plan that's so great, are we not allowed to take a look at it?
Yeah.
To just verify that it is in fact what we're all talking about. That makes no sense.
You can look at it all you want, but their, their qualification, it should be as far as what they feel to go there.
Yeah, we understand that. It's why we're asking for a professional to do the plan.
Yeah, they will, but they're not gonna go revisit this and say, oh, well, I don't think it's great enough and we want to add this or that. That's where I'm getting at with this.
Yeah, okay, well, I guess there's some risk and everything, but I mean, do you want to get this done or not? I mean.
I know, just.
Yeah, why, I don't know why this, this, we're so hung up on this.
We don't, we just want to see the plan and.
Plan, or if it's composed with what we're talking about and, and that, you know, that should. If it, someone's gonna own it, it's his idea of what's, he's gonna plant a bunch of palm trees where he's supposed to say, great, you know. I'm making an example, but I mean, so come on, let's be realistic.
I know it.
Difficult here. We just want to, you know, we, we said a qualified professional and the way you described it, they know the native, you know, species that will survive there. Yeah, yeah, we talked about it. That's what we're talking about.
Just ask, yeah.
I said so hard.
But I think we also, I mean, not to see the plan, the planning board should be able to, to see the qualifications of the person who did the plan, see the plan and be sure that we, that we think that it meets the what we're all talking about, what our expectations are of this plan.
I couldn't agree more because this is the issue that for me correlates to the character and preservation of the area and it's hugely important.
And the protection of the environment of the area.
Yeah, and, and when I look at our subdivisions in section five, A4, preservation of existing features, my hope is, is that the applicants and you, Doug and Jason, will come to us the willingness to preserve the existing features. And I haven't seen a lot of that tonight.
I thought we had talked to an agreement. Now we're just reopening this and.
I don't think we've, we've agreed. I think, I think we, we, I'm just, I am just reiterating where we stand right now. And I just want to make sure that this is where we are and I, and this will matter to the next step, which will be to vote on this plan. So are we talking about being able to have a plan from the professional of your choice to review on this buffer, 25-foot buffer? Three mature trees per site plus smaller plants native to the area that will restore that planting buffer zone.
I know. Get to a certain point, you're asking for something a little bit more because when you said we're asking for a plan, then they said, so we can drill, so we can go to qualified professionals, so you can reopen it and revisit this issue, which I thought we put to bed because our offer was to you was to provide you with the plan just so you could look at, not to call it revised, tweak through all these things too, but just to look at to see, you know, that we actually did hire somebody and somebody that is professional looked at. And that should be.
But, but it's about also meeting the objective.
Which we're not wanting to get a view shed overnight. We talked about that.
I understand that. I think we went through that. I think we just want to see the, the plans. We want to see the plants and we want to be sure that what we're asking for is going to be done.
I also think, I also think the conservation commission should review the plan to make sure that the native plantings and all that. And Betsy may say that because it's a, a forester, that's not necessary, but I think that's a protection that we should.
I can, I can tell you if they're native plants.
No, I know you can, but.
I, I would.
I actually think our direction, a plan should be reviewed by Concom.
But it's not, it's not, it's, it's in the front of the house. Yes, Betsy.
It just, it's getting really late, Karen. I think we, we need, either need to approve or deny or, or move forward or get an extension or do something.
Okay. This is, this is what I'm trying to get there.
I, I know, but if I can't approve the plan as presented, I'm not going to approve it unless it gets, we can review the planting plan. So I, you know, I, that's where we're, that's where I'm at. And I want to see a building envelope. I want, I want to see what that is and, and some approval.
You need two minutes just to discuss our options here. If you don't mind.
Yep, go ahead.
So what are we doing?
They're, they're, they're deliberating.
Members of the board, we were just saying that, you know, we're happy to follow the statutes and, and the town subdivision regulations. Where we get a little uncomfortable when there's kind of ad hoc or made up additional regulations. So when it comes to the plan, we're okay with having a plan that would be provided to you, but we're not comfortable with a kind of like review and approve part of it because that's not in the subdivision regulation or in the statute.
Of course it is.
Division regulation if you're seeking some additional approval.
It, it is in our regulations under compliance hearings.
No, but it's not, there's no, there's no requirement in the subdivision regulation to create a plan of where trees will be planted to be reviewed by the planning board and the conservation committee.
You know, at this point, I think we ought to vote on the application.
I agree.
And I, I move that we deny the application for this subdivision. Hang on a second and I'm gonna. With the clearing and the grubbing of the property protections that would, would have naturally been in place, and I would argue should have been in place for both the historic character of the neighborhood and the environment, slopes, wetlands that have been the property being stripped. I believe that this work has been done outside the guidelines of both the state and town laws, RSA 227 and subdivision laws, section 5H. This proposed subdivision, a development of this magnitude in a naturally recognized historic neighborhood will affect the character of the neighborhood, will affect the, the integrity of the wetlands. And I am not comfortable with the assurances that I have received tonight, the, the pushback on further review of a buffer plan. The, the discussion about why, honestly, I think the discussion about building envelopes was not to my satisfaction. Furthermore, I think the alteration of terrain is permanent, is going to have a huge impact on how this property is, is divided and building envelopes and all that. I just don't see that we're ready to approve. So, so given the time clock, I'm going to move that we deny the application.
One second. Hardwick seconds.
Okay, are we having any discussion on this?
Yeah.
I would. I think we're pretty close, actually. I, I think, well, but I think the time is getting late. If, if they want, if, if where it is now, I mean, I, I, I would ask, they give us an extension. They try to come up with language we can agree with and we're pretty close. In that, you know, that's the trouble with things that go late into the night. Things that are workable will become unworkable. And I, but we do have a deadline we have to deal with. And I think, I still believe that we, even though there's been some acrimony and a lot of strenuous arguments, I, I think we're pretty darn close. So I think it would be a shame at this point to toss it all out. So I guess I would like before we vote on this to see whether or not they would grant an extension and give us some more time to try to deal with these few things. If not, I guess we'll do what we do, but I, maybe they could, that's what I would make that request. Because I honestly think we are close, as frustrating as it is and as tired as we all are.
I have to agree. I, I feel like we got pretty damn close and I would love to get an extension or.
I also think that we did not have a chance to open the hearing to additional public comment. I think that might put us in some jeopardy in the future. And so this, the conversation tonight took too long. We have, we have not had the benefit of additional public input, which I think is important. And so that's another reason that I think at, given if we're voting tonight, I, I restate my motion to deny. But I would also consider withdrawing that motion if we had an extension of the time clock.
It's, it's a balls in your court, I guess.
And let me just get this right. You're saying that you'll deny it unless we agree to an extension?
No, we're not saying that. We're taking, we're taking a vote on it. On this, so you don't have to agree to the extension. We'll take, we can take the vote. But I think what I, I am saying is that we're pretty darn close.
There's been a motion on the table, seconded to deny. We haven't voted yet, so.
We'll take the vote. I guess you can roll the dice, see.
Two people on the board are discussing.
Yeah, so.
An extension, which would.
So I, I guess, so it's, this is offered in good faith. And so I ask you to take it in that way. I honestly think we are close. I, I, to resolving this, but you may see it differently.
They don't end up going to court.
So you want to talk about it first and let us know or just let us know? I don't know. That's, I honestly think we are close, but the hour is getting late. You know, people here have worked other jobs and and so.
Are you guys talking about this or should we go ahead and?
One second.
Okay, all right.
All right, yeah.
Members of the board, we're, we would consider granting your request for an extension under two conditions. Condition number one, the extension is only good through December 29th. Condition two, it's, we're not going back to public debate, we're going forward and continuing what we've been talking about tonight.
And it feels like the, the thing that's standing in the way for some people on the board is this having the the damn planting plan? And so how do people feel about that?
The planting plan, I think we need, we need to see it.
No, I mean, the the conditions that, so that would mean we would have to meet again during the holidays or right after?
No.
I think that's unreasonable.
Me too.
But people aren't, people have.
I know what you mean.
Can't do it.
And and is he talking about no additional public comment at all?
Yes, yes.
I I don't, I don't think legally that's fair.
Yeah, I don't know if we can do that, honestly. So the best we can do, so let's say, for example, that this is what, you know, we, you know, to say we can't have any comment, I don't know if we're allowed to do that, to be honest.
Yeah, I don't know.
Public phase is closed.
What?
The public phase has been closed.
Well, yeah, but there's changes that have been made, so, so.
Only that the board rejected.
Okay, well, I guess you can, you know.
You can say that, but we don't.
That this is, I've asked you to consider this, then we can move on. I think we'd need a little more time, given the holidays and all, to get this done. So early January, maybe, that would be more realistic. And then as to the other, I doubt very much we have the authority to cut off all public comment. We can, you know, not let it go on forever, that's true, but but people will probably be able to say things and that's part of the process because we're a public body and that's the way it works, so.
The fifth of January is the first Tuesday in January.
Yeah, I I want to just ask what the purpose is for extending from the applicant's perspective and the board's perspective because there were some pretty, I mean, there were two issues that we could not come to terms with.
Right.
And well, I just.
I mean, if we're not going to come to terms with those, why would we extend? For what purpose?
Okay, I can see this. I, I, you know, I'm a lawyer myself, a recovering lawyer, retired, but I'll say this, when things go late into the evening, things become, people become less workable when people become tired. And there's things that people need to consider that if they're, you know, they need to consider, they might want to think about and and people here may want to think about. And we lose nothing. And I honestly think they lose nothing at this point. It's not like shovels are going to be in the ground on, over the Christmas holidays. I think we've spent a lot of energy and I think there's been vigorous debate, but I think we've made progress. It may, who knows, it may turn out exactly, you know, it'll work, but I think we have a reasonable shot at it. And I I don't see us having anything to lose. And I honestly, in good faith, I say this to the shaddiks and their attorney, I don't think you have anything to lose in this.
Can you repeat that, the last part?
I think, you know, I think we, it's, I, from my personal point of view, I just think it's a good idea. We're close. I think neither the select board, I mean, not select board, the planning board, nobody is losing anything from this. I I guess you're losing a little bit of time, but but I I think we're, we're pretty close. And it would be a shame just because the late hour of the night, you know, there's, you know, it it just would work better. So I, that's, and but as to no public comment, I think we have an obligation to allow public comment.
I would agree.
Yeah, I also don't think.
If there was a January 30th extension and a public comment allowed, I would be, I would consider withdrawing my motion. However, I do kind of agree with Jerry that it doesn't, it seems to me that there are some areas where we will never meet in the middle. I mean, we've, we have gone from 100 to 25 feet, we've gone from a protective visual buffer to a minimal buffer that they won't even let us see the plan for. I just think we've been trying to negotiate in good faith and I'm not feeling it from.
Time to prepare. Okay, well, I I would urge, well, maybe, I don't know how we feel, but I would urge a date sometime early in January, for no other reason, it would be good to get this done.
I totally agree, but I'm not sure if we'll do it.
Just let me say this, it's, it's hard, it's hard to judge, especially when you're tired and when you're in, you know, you have vigorously believe what you believe, whether or not there's been any movement or progress. I honestly think there has and I think we're not that far apart. I think it's worth it. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. We'll have to make whatever decision people decides appropriate. I'm not saying, who knows how it'll turn out. But I I think, at least on this track, we've made some progress and there's a reasonable chance of resolving it and moving forward. But that's only my point of view.
Can I suggest something? The the two, there are two things out there that there's no way they're going to be even slightly advanced by our first meet, our January 5th date meeting. One is the alteration of terrain permit and the other is the planting plan. If we grant, if if an extension is granted to sometime late in January, there may be a hope of advancing those two pieces of critical information for us. But so that would be my, my only reason for even considering an extension. With the information that we have right now, I don't see how we can make, we can, we can approve this.
The planting plan will.
I'm sorry, can't hear.
In regards to the planting plan, within the buffer, we will have one prepared for the next year.
You'll, you'll do, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part either. You'll have what?
Hang on a second, that's coming up.
Yeah.
In regards to the planting plan, we will have one prepared for the next year and submitted to you. Let's say you can comment.
Okay, that would be great.
Extension until the 29th of December. We don't have a meeting date before now in the 29th of December. So so giving us an extension to the end of December is no good.
Okay, are you, well, yeah, okay. Thank you for that. But the question is, it's still, can can we get a meeting date in January?
Yeah. Can we get a meeting date in January on the 5th, it's the first Tuesday? December, I mean, it's, it's only days difference, but it makes a big difference to people's plans for the holidays. I just don't see.
January.
What's that?
First Tuesday in January.
First Tuesday is the 5th of January.
We in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so an extension to the 5th of January meeting, but we cannot, we cannot accept no public comment. I just feel like that's not in our legal bounds to, to do. I, I don't think anyone agrees on the board to legality of that.
No, and in fact, I think we got to start with public comment.
Oh, just, yeah.
Shut up?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, my God. It's no, it's no, we're not, but we can't agree that that'll, you know, that that we won't allow it. Not, the decision to allow it hasn't been made, but we cannot agree that we will not allow it.
We can agree on the extension deadline, the January.
Extension deadline, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what, I couldn't hear.
They'll, they could, I think they'll agree to the extension deadline to the 5th of January, correct?
Yeah.
And if you could, if, you know, it would be great if you could add that planting plan by then, that would make things easier.
Well, and and I wanted to ask, you know, how much in advance is reasonable to review that so we don't look at it an hour before meeting?
Yeah, on the holidays, and I don't know how soon we're going to be able to get that ourselves, so.
Well, if it's, if the, if the planting plan is something you're agreeing for us to look at, then it could be a condition.
It should be 48 hours if we're going to get it, it should be, anything that we're going to be receiving before another hearing for consideration should be more than five hours ahead of time.
Hopefully 48 hours.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you, Brad.
Have it sooner, love it to you.
And you have taken off that public hearing stipulation of your extension?
Yes, but I don't want to waste a whole meeting listening to comments and going nowhere.
Fair enough.
Yep, that's fair. We've had two, two whole meetings of public hearings, I.
It is possible to, I mean, ask people not to repeat what they've already said before and all that.
Here's what's not going to go over well, is there's a whole bunch of public commentary on the 5th and then at nine o'clock, the board asks for another extension.
Agreed, all right, so, so that's it.
We don't want another extension.
We want this done as much as you can, believe me.
No, no, I hear you. That's, that's reasonable. I mean.
So how are you, what's your plan to manage?
I I honestly think that we are very, very close. We just need.
What's your, what's your plan to manage January 5th?
Oh, I don't, well, do we have to?
We don't.
I think.
I'm thinking, I'm, I'm not going to withdraw my mo- motion. I'd like to hear from, from all of us about whether or not they would, they would like to vote tonight or, or consider accepting this extension grant.
I already seconded it.
So you want to vote not extend it? Is that what you mean?
Honestly, I'm not sure at this point.
I mean, that's fair, but I just, is that what you're saying, Betsy?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. I'd like to hear from the other board members about it. Are we going to get anywhere with additional time?
I, I know Brad, I'm sorry, Brad, you you feel we're very close. I, I actually am feeling like we've moved further apart tonight in terms of what I was looking for for participation, cooperation. But I'm, I'm willing to extend if we think we're going to get somewhere.
Well, I don't think it hurts to extend, honestly. I think they're willing to put together a planting plan. That seems to be a huge sticking point right now. I think if they're willing to extend and they come back with the planting plan, I think they they understand what we're looking for. We've gone over and over this. And the building envelope, I don't think it hurts to extend.
All right, I'll agree to that.
Then then we vote on the 5th.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, fair enough.
So extend to the 5th.
With the stipulation off that they gave us about public comment?
Right.
Yes, that, that we, we cannot agree to that. But I'd like to hear from Melissa and Ron directly, the extension, your thumbs up or something.
We didn't extend it on the 6th.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, so.
Draw my motion and move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Well, are we going to do any hearing on the site plan this evening?
No.
No.
It is quarter ten.
Go to continue, yes, so we should.
Continue.
Vote to continue the site development hearing until the 5th, although I doubt we'll get to it, but we can extend it to the.
No, 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 we are going to get to it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, let's try to get it done.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we will extend, yeah, we will continue the site development case.
Do we have to vote on that, all in favor? Hand vote?
All in favor?
Okay, now my motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Merry Christmas, happy everything.
Merry Christmas.
New Year.
What? Happy New Year.